Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, April 5th, 2018. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Suss.
Here.
Trustee Lumsden.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Village manager Mars.
Here.
Village manager Francis.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Bailey, now present this evening, Trustee Pollak, Trustee Jeter.
If you'll please rise for the pledge.
This is the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic of religious stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for everyone who is here. I wish, if I had known we were going to have this turn out, we would have had it in a larger room where we'd have had more seats. I apologize for that, but I'm really glad to see everyone tonight. If you, at any point you would like to say something to the board, I ask that you just be recognized by the president and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. With your indulgence, we're going to switch things just a little bit. We're going to go ahead and get our official business out of the way. It will only take a few minutes. We've got some folks who are here who need to leave. So we're going to do the reports of, my report first, and then we will immediately go to the presentation concerning the Groveland Levy. So at that, we'll move on to the president's report. First up this evening is a presidential proclamation concerning Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, purify the air and water by reducing pollution, and create plant and wildlife diversity. And whereas trees have been shown to reduce crime, increase property values, reduce heating and cooling costs, and conserve energy use. And whereas trees can beautify our parks and streets, improve the quality of our urban environment, and carry on the tradition planned by the inventive vision of Frederick Law Olmsted. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Benjamin Sells, village president, proclaim the day of April 27th, 2018, as Arbor Day in the Village of Riverside. And I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promise and promote the protection and care of trees within our communities and woodlands, in witness of my hand this day, April 5th, 2018. And next up is a very nice, do we have somebody here this evening from the Olmsted Society? No?
One more?
The Olmsted Society.
Yeah. Kathy, can you speak?
I will try. I'm a low talker, but I'll do my best.
Yes, Mr. Lumsden. Does he exist, Mark?
That she is.
Oh, there she is. If you'll join me at the podium. This is Kathy Maloney, the president of the Frederick Law Olmsted Society. And what I have here is a proclamation honoring the Frederick Law Olmsted Society of Riverside on their 50th anniversary. Whereas 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the Frederick Law Olmsted Society of Riverside. And whereas the Olmsted Society initiated the designation of the National Historic Landscape District for the Village of Riverside in 1970. And whereas the Olmsted Society tirelessly promotes the historical and cultural significance of Riverside to a worldwide audience. And whereas the Olmsted Society consistently donates planting materials, shrubs, and trees to the Village of Riverside toward the restoration and maintenance of the landscape designed by Olmsted, including 50 trees in honor of its 50th anniversary, valued to date at over $60,000 that the Olmsted Society has donated to the village. And whereas the Olmsted Society conducts regular Riverside workdays where its members and all invited residents weed the public parklands and plant trees and shrubs, resulting to date in over 41,000 volunteer hours with an estimated value of over $400,000. And whereas the Olmsted Society conducts walking tours of the village and other special events that have acquainted over 21,000 visitors with the area's beauty. And whereas the Olmsted Society has sponsored hundreds of educational lectures presented to the public free of charge. And whereas the Olmsted Society has donated over 800 volumes on the Olmsted-inspired topics such as landscape architecture to the Riverside Public Library. And whereas the Olmsted Society has inspired hundreds of Riverside children to compose poems for the Reflections on Riverside Student Poetry Contest. Now therefore be it resolved by the president and the trustees of the Village of Riverside that we do hereby congratulate the Frederick Law Olmsted Society of Riverside on its 50th anniversary and express our sincere and deep appreciation for its outstanding service and dedication to the Village of Riverside and its residents.
Just on behalf of the Olmsted Society and for 50 years' worth of previous board members and members, thank you all very much for doing all of this work over the past 50 years and hopefully in the future. Please join us in the future, and thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Next up is a motion to appoint various individuals to village boards and commissions. I have two nominations, or two appointments this evening, and that is Christopher Porter and Matthew Wolfe to the Parks and Recreation Board, and the appointment of Lisa Lambros to the Landscape Advisory Commission. I ask for a motion and a second to approve.
Someone.
By Mr. Lumsden, second by Mr. Ballerine. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
President Suss.
Aye. The motion carries. Mr. Wolfe is here with us this evening, so sir, if you would step up, and Madam Clerk, if you could do the honors.
Just need you to raise your hand and move feet after me. I, Matthew Wolfe, do solemnly swear.
I, Matthew Wolfe, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Parks and Recreation Board Member.
Of the Office of Parks and Recreation Board Member.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Welcome aboard. I've never had so many people come for an appointee before. Next up is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a Class E restaurant liquor license to 34 East Lounge. You have the materials before you. I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve. By Mr. Ballerine. By Ms. Peters. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
President Suss.
Aye. Motion carries. Just for parliamentarians in the audience who might be interested, the reason I'm voting tonight is we have three trustees absent. Anytime there is a vote of three, I am called upon to vote. Under normal circumstances, I would only vote if there was a tie, so that's why I'm voting tonight. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. And unfortunately, I have to read this because of our lawyer. It's his fault. Approved voucher list of bills, April 5th, 2018. Approved village board of trustee regular meeting minutes of March 15, 2018. File and review the Landscape Advisory Commission regular meeting minutes of January 19, 2018, and the Parks and Recreation Board meeting minutes of January 22, 2018. A resolution authorizing the Village of Riverside to sponsor the West Central Consolidated Communications for Membership in the Intergovernmental Risk Management Association, Agency. A motion to approve amendment number one to the Intergovernmental Funding Agreement for the repair of a commuter facility in the Village of Riverside. A motion to approve a special event application for Riverside Arts Weekend to be held in Guthrie Park on Saturday and Sunday, May 19 and 20, 2018. And a resolution authorizing the village manager to reimburse the Village of North Riverside in the amount not to exceed $35,000 to purchase workstations, phones, and other equipment to accommodate the booking of prisoners at the consolidated center. Are there any items anyone needs to be removed for discussion? If there are none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve. Madam Mr. Lumsden.
Second.
And Ms. Peters, please call the roll.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
President Suss.
Aye. Do you want to go ahead and get your report out of the way?
I don't have a report this evening.
So there is no mandatory report. Thank you for your indulgence. We'll now go back to our regular meeting agenda. And tonight, we have with us the Army Corps of Engineers that's going to present its Groveland Avenue Levy Flood Risk Management Project. I would ask everyone to, let's hear their presentation first, and then we will certainly entertain any questions or comments that anyone with us here this evening has. Thank you very much. Jeff?
Appreciate having such a great crowd to be here to hear about this awesome project that we're presenting to the board for your consideration. So we're going to go through a little bit of background. I'm going to tell you a little bit about where this came from and where we propose to place this levy. Then we'll go over some project costs, a proposed schedule, and then at the end, we'll be ready for some questions. So a little background on this, the Upper Displanes River and Tributaries, Illinois and Wisconsin study is a project, is where this project came from. The study itself was authorized in our Water Resources Development Act of 1999. It was undertaken, started in 2002.
Could I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
Some of you folks want to come back over here and stand behind trustees or on this side so you can actually see this. You're welcome to do so. Because if you came, I'd like you to be actually able to see what we're doing here.
You can, some folks want to come over here. You're welcome to come over here and stand as well so you can see. They're the nice ones on that side. This is the side you've got to watch out for. Yeah, please come on in. I want everybody to be able to see this. Okay, Jeff?
Okay. Thank you all very much.
No problem. So in 2002, we kicked off the study, and then on March 10th, 2014, we finalized the report and sent it to our division commander. When our division commander approved that report on that date, he authorized us to move forward with this project. It's considered a continuing authorities program, which means that we don't need it specifically authorized by Congress. The report itself, the Upper Displanes River and Tributaries, was authorized by Congress in December 2016, and the word of bill that they passed, actually on December 16th, Obama signed that into law. So the overall project itself is authorized, as well as through the division commander's letter. In 2015, we received $50,000 to negotiate a project partnership agreement. What that is, is that whenever we start a project like this, we partner with a local entity such as the Village of Riverside, Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, or the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and they provide various parts of the project itself. We'll hear a little bit more about that, but that includes the land, as well as 35% of all costs. So at this time, we're continuing to negotiate, and we did some work in that timeframe as well, refining the modeling that looked at what the levy does and how the river reacts to the levy being in place. So hopefully, a lot of this will answer a lot of questions that you may have and will be able to move forward from there. So this is kind of the modeling results that we want to go over. This is the first result of what it actually looks like when it floods. The great thing with our new modeling, go ahead and you can start this up, is we can actually show you a video of what it looks like where a flood to occur. And this is through a program that we run. We have input all the data from the river itself and the water coming into the river. And as you can see, it'll start to fill in various locations. It actually starts in the south to flood that neighborhood south of Forest Avenue. And as it goes into that, if we can get the video to work, you'll see that it flows up over Forest Avenue and then around, there's a little house up there, too, that it'll flow around and down into the Groveland Avenue area. Technology is great when it works and when it doesn't. Hey, there we go. So you see it's flooding the southern portion, then comes up, and then also from the north as well. So we get, and then the final portion is that there, little bit that floods along the road up there in the Maple neighborhood. So this is what it looks like without any levy in place. You can see that that neighborhood is completely covered with water. The neighborhood up north of there has some areas that flood in, around houses, but not through houses for the most part. And the forest preserve on the west side of the river floods out completely, which is great because the forest preserve is there. There's nothing really there that we need to worry about in terms of more homes, and the forest preserve is providing what it should do. So if we go to the next slide, so we looked at this, and we said, okay, this is a problem that we need to try and solve. And so we looked and said, okay, all of these homes in this area, they tend to flood. What can we do? The nice thing is that there is a current levy in this Groveland area right here. And so that does provide some minimal protection to the homes on this side. However, the levy stopped right here, and so floodwaters can go around the end of it. And we also have floodwaters, as you saw from the modeling, that mainly come in from down here. They flood out this area, they flow across the road and fill in, and then finally, we get some action up here where it flows around this home, over the road, and into the neighborhood, just completing the flooding process. So we propose to raise this levy by driving sheet pile through the levy. It will raise the levy approximately two feet to elevation 618. That's 867 linear feet of sheet pile that we would drive through that levy. It'll help stabilize the levy and reinforce it, and it provides the necessary level protection to keep the levy, keeping the floodwaters out. To go along with that, we will put a road closure structure across Forest Avenue, and that's for the most extreme events. When the water gets to its highest, this would be used to close off the road, keep the water from flowing down into the neighborhood that way. We'd also construct a levy flood wall. And basically, that's steel sheet pile driven into this area here and a concrete cap placed over top of it. And it forms a solid wall that holds the floodwaters back. To go with that, to help prevent the fact that our water comes in around this side, we also need to tie into high ground. High ground is actually out here. This is 618 barely, but it is 618 feet out here at the road. And so what we need to do is we need to, the original proposal was to raise the road, and this was part of our original study, is that we said we would just raise the road as, basically acting as a levy all along this area here. And that was our original proposal. In discussions with the village, it said, well, why don't you just build another flood wall there? And so we looked at that, and we think that's definitely a possibility. It's something that, as we get into our final design and engineering, we have to look at the cost differential. We think it'll be very close, and we think that's a good proposal to look at and to go forward with. So that actually looks like this. So then we would have steel sheet pile driven here with a flood wall to the south and a flood wall along the northern portion of park. It'd leave the road in place. It would be in the right-of-way along the road and would provide the protection necessary to keep this area from flooding. So what does this look like? So just a couple of examples of what this would actually look like for you if you were to drive up or walk up to this wall. This is a couple of examples of floodwalls that the Corps of Engineers has installed in the Illinois and Indiana area. This flood wall is actually in Indiana. It's along the Little Calumet River. You can see, this is the concrete portion. Underneath this concrete is steel sheet pile. For those of you that don't know what steel sheet pile looks like, this is steel sheet pile right here. So for the areas that already have a levy, kind of like this is right here, we'd be driving steel sheet pile, and this is approximately two feet of steel sticking up over this embankment here. And then it's capped. It has a steel cap that runs along the top of it. Sheet pile, it has a Z configuration. It zigs and zags. So the steel cap makes it one uniform thing. People don't fall on it. It keeps it protected. But the concrete can be very nice looking. We can stamp it with like cobblestone type of look. Some of that, the other look here, we have like a concrete fins, just vertical lines. So it can have a very nice texture to it, and it actually can be somewhat aesthetic. Not the prettiest thing in the world to look at, but it's better than just a flat concrete wall. So those are some of the examples that we have of what we've built. This is actually, this one here is in Mount Prospect, Illinois. It's levy 37 along the Displanes River, and we completed that back in 2013. So the big question is, what does it look like when we run it after we've installed the wall? So we did the modeling. We figured out what it looks like without any wall in place. And then our programs allow us to put the wall in as if it's there. And so we videoed that as well, and it will show you what it looks like with the wall in place. So you can see, I think it's running. So hard to tell. So you can see, it continues to fill in over on the forest preserve side. But the difference with this one is we get no flooding down here. We get no flooding here, and the water flows in up here just as it did before, and we get this little bit up here, just as the same as before. Now, to show you, this is a side-by-side comparison. So as you can see, this is without the flood wall, and this is with the flood wall. And we did a very detailed analysis of this, as we had had questions before. What does this look like? Why does this show that there's no impact? So what are the benefits of this? So it definitely prevents flooding in this area, keeps these homes dry. And our report indicates that this prevents, on an average annual basis, $229,000 in benefits to the residents in this area. So it protects their homes from the flooding that occurs normally without this in place. It does not increase river levels upstream or downstream. All of our modeling indicates that the water levels are the same. Now, you can see this because this little home that's on an island, he's still on an island, and you can see the pattern here. The water flows, you know, it goes where it can, and it has this little hump in here and then this, and that doesn't change over here. This is exactly the same profile as it goes through this area. It doesn't change. And again, up here, you have this little area up here that floods with the flood wall in place and without the flood wall in place. So just to show just how carefully we looked at this, this is a look, actually, let me go back once. So what we did is we took our computer program and we drew a line from here into here. And what we can look at then is a comparison between these two profiles. We have this flooded profile with no levy in place and this profile with the levy in place. And over here, what this profile shows, this is elevation, so 615, 614. This is the ground elevation. That's what that represents. And then we have these two lines. This blue line, this dark blue line, is the floodwaters without the levy in place. And this light blue line right here, this represents where the flood wall would be located and the water elevation with the flood wall in place. So you can see, there's a very small difference right here at the 175 to 170, let's see, 178 approximately, so about three feet in length. And that represents a .04 feet, which is less than half an inch of water increase in elevation in this small area here, and it's even less all the way back to the river. There is a slight difference, but it is, that difference is considered a no increase. And now specifically, that happens, we have, to build this, we have to go to the state of Illinois, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and we have been coordinating with them, and they have a permit that allows us to build this levy or not. And their regulatory process looks at this, and in their minds, .04 is a no difference because .04 rounds down to zero. If it was .05, it would make a difference. At this point, it's .04. And that is, again, half an inch for approximately three to five feet immediately adjacent to the wall. And that's in, it's in the right-of-way slash portion of the backyard of that home that becomes an island. The rest of the increase is negligible. It's almost unmeasurable. We had been requested to take these two shots and overlay them and show the difference. The difference is so small, you can't even see it graphically represented. This was the best way we had of being able to show you what the actual difference is. All right. So what does this project cost? So right now, we're trying to work out the project partnership agreement, then we would move into project engineering and design. It's about $700,000 worth of design, six and a half, a little over six and a half. We would then issue a construction contract, which would have construction management, people, we have people in our office that oversee the construction, ensure that it's done to the correct standards. And that represents about $300,000 in expenses. Lands and damages. So lands is basically the land that would need to be acquired to build the levy, and about $500,000 in value in that, and that would be permanent and right-of-way necessary to build that. We also have relocations. We assume that in that area somewhere, there's probably several things that could be, need to be relocated. I heard about a water main that goes through that area. So this covers the expenses of those possible intrusions into the wall. And we have ways to either lower those things or build the wall around them so they're not a concern, but that captures the cost of actually doing that. The construction itself, we estimate at $4.6 million, .665, for a total project cost of $7,160,082. Of that, the federal share is 65%, or $4.654 million, and the non-federal share, which our local sponsor would be responsible for, would be a little over $2.5 million. And this is our current working estimate. It represents a planning level of estimate, which the designs that you saw, the lines on the paper, on the screen, we took those and we estimated what the cost would be to put that material in place, and this is our current working estimate. This actually estimate reflects if we were to do the road raise. If we were to switch over to the flood walls the village has requested, we would look at that in the project engineering and design phase and come up with an estimate for that, that change. That change most likely will be very similar. If there was an increase in costs, some of that cost could be borne fully by the non-federal sponsor, but we will work that out as we go through the final engineering and design. Most likely, it won't cost anymore. So how would we build this? What kind of timeline are we looking at? So hopefully, if this is approved to move forward, we would look to finalize our project partnership agreement with the village June, July of this year, which would then kick us off into final engineering and design, which would be a little over a year and a half, about a year and a couple of months process. We'd hope to be finished with that in September of 2019. We would then look to award our construction contract in the fall and winter of 2019, and with construction beginning sometime this spring and summer of 2020. I anticipate that this construction would be about a two-year process. It could be two and a half to three, depending on when all of these dates up here actually fall out and get finalized. Have to be a little careful because just in case things slip from time to time, some things come up and you need to deal with them. But we could be done by the summer of 2022. So, any questions?
If you can go back to the cost, I just want to make one thing clear about the cost. With regard to the non-federal cost that you see, I have a letter here from David St. Pierre, who's the executive director of the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. The MWRD has agreed with the village that they will actually cover. The MWRD has agreed with the village that they will actually cover the non-federal cost of this, so there will be no cost to the village of Riverside for this project, which is a significant, obviously a significant benefit to all of us. So I just wanted to know about that. So with that, you know, why don't we open it up to the trustees first, if you have any general questions, and then we'll be glad to take any questions or comments from the folks here. Any questions from trustees?
I do have a question. You showed the effect upstream, did you do anything downstream to figure out, like, the same sort of?
Yes, so we took a close look at the area completely around this, and basically, our modeling indicates, so we had what's called the regulatory model, or 1D model, and that indicated there was no change anywhere in this. Then we did the 2D model, as was requested, and the only change that we were able to find was in that area, and it was the 0.04 or less, which is considered not a change when it comes to permitting the process, permitting the actual levee itself. So we did confirm both upstream and downstream.
So there is an adverse impact study done?
Adverse impact would be the modeling that we did, yes.
Both downstream and?
Correct.
East or west of the first gap?
Yes.
Go to your first shot, that might help him, because it shows Swan Pond is a study as well.
Yeah.
Right there, so if you see down in the bottom corner, you can see Swan Pond, so we can take the loop all the way down, past Indian Gardens into consideration as well. Then we zoomed in on the part where the success happens, is up at the top.
And the only place you found any difference was up?
Was in that.
Above, right in that spot, okay.
Will this change flood designation on the FEMA max?
That is one part that I failed to mention. At this time, because there is limited, high ground to tie into, we do not believe this will meet the FEMA requirements to remove people from their requirement to have FEMA flood insurance. FEMA requires a level above the 100-year in protection, it's three feet regulatory-wise. If we do specific modeling, we can get it down to two feet, and that can then change the mapping for it. But we don't believe that there's enough freeboard in this area, because of the lack of high ground to tie into, that we would be able to achieve FEMA certification of this levee. This is a flood risk management project, which means that even with the levee in place, there is the chance, because weather can do what weather will do, that it could always overtop. And so, we always recommend, even if we have people that are behind a FEMA-certified levee, we recommend that they keep their flood insurance, because that is the only protection they have, should the flood wall get overtopped in a very severe event.
If that should happen, how would the water leave?
How would the water leave if it was overtop? So, basically, behind the flood wall, we'll have one or two pump stations, it's yet to be determined where those would be located. The pump stations pump the water out that collects behind the flood wall that normally would just flow to the river. So if the flood wall were to overtop, those pump stations would be there to remove some of it. In this case, it would be a very slow process, because we don't anticipate a ton of water collecting behind there to begin with. So we'd probably have to bring in assistance and assistant pumps to help pump it out at that point in time.
Which is very similar to what they had to do the last time, when you guys had to have the pumps down in Groveland and Lake, or Groveland and Park.
And who will maintain the flood wall?
So, part of the project partnership agreement is that the local sponsor operates and maintains the flood wall. In this case, what you have is a yearly inspection that is done in conjunction with the US Army Corps of Engineers. We bring a whole team out, we have several engineers, we have a couple of field personnel that take a look at everything, make sure that it's being maintained to the proper status. In the case of this flood wall, really what you're looking at is maintaining the construction joints of the concrete, and the concrete flood wall, you can go back to the flood wall pictures. It's kinda hard to see, because it's a little dark, but there are joints in here, and those have like, they have like an expansion material in them to keep the water out, so it doesn't freeze and thaw and break the concrete apart. So they're responsible for making sure that that stays in place. The material that we use has several-year warranty on it, it's not real expensive, it's like caulk, basically. It's like caulk that you go to Home Depot and get, and you put in these joints, fills it in, keeps the water out. The big maintenance piece, on the actual sheet pile portion, there's nothing really to do, it just kinda sits there. You have to inspect it, make sure it's not, nothing's going on with it. The one piece that would require some intermittent maintenance would be the pump stations that would be installed. It's basically like big sump pumps that you have in your basement, they would have an electrical input that would then, you need to make sure that the outputs are cleaned out, and that the pumps operate properly. And that's part of the yearly inspection process.
Do you answer my question? Do we maintain it, or do you maintain?
It's not us, it's you, yes, as the project partnership.
We're the project partnership.
Yes, it becomes ours in perpetuity, similar to the existing wall, it becomes our responsibility.
You know, this was proposed a while ago, and things have happened since that time. Basically, Riverside Lawn has somewhat been totally evacuated by pretty much many of the houses that are there. Is there any, is there any look at any kind of storage capabilities over in that area?
So, when we did the original study, back when we started, we looked up and down the river for storage locations. We would love to be able to put storage in, in the forest preserve, but the forest preserve doesn't think that that's a proper use of forest preserve land, they think it's for trees, which it is. So, really, in this case, in order to store enough water to protect this area, we'd require a very large area of land, several hundred acre feet. We have proposed right now two levees, or two reservoirs further north, they cover, let's see, one of them covers almost 50 acres of land, and that gets us a couple hundred acre feet of water storage. Generally, what you see in a water storage of that size, you see inches of reduction in the water levels in the Displanes River. The problem with water storage is, is that our area is so flat, that when you store the water, it gives you inches of reduction for miles. It doesn't give you feet of reduction for a very short length of time. So, in order to store enough water to reduce this flooding, it would take a very large reservoir, and we do not have anything in this location that would be able to do that.
CRS credits?
CRS credits.
What's a CRS credit?
Credits, credits given back to the village for mitigating flood.
So that would be up to your flood, your floodplain manager, your floodplain management program. You would be able to use this, I'm not as 100% familiar with that process, but you would be able to say that you have removed, or you have protected this area, and then that somehow translates into something that benefits the village. That's not my area of expertise, but I can find out more information if you'd like.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Just want to say, let us finish up here first. So, if you can go back to the photograph of the wall itself?
Yeah.
So, and Chief Buckley, this also is a question for you. The highest flood that I'm aware of is the 2013.
Correct.
And that was 11 feet, four inches, I think it was.
Yeah.
So, the existing Groveland levee was not breached at that time?
Correct.
So, why are we adding two more feet on top of the existing levee?
So, whenever we build a levee, we have to build it to our standards. And so, the fact that the levee is there now, we are, it's of uncertain origin, as far as we're concerned, we don't know who put it there. So in order to strengthen it, to ensure that there would be no breach in the future, we anticipate that the sheet pile would provide that, by driving that down through the center. The other thing is, is that we don't allow, we don't build levees that just barely make it, we have to have freeboard, and so this two feet of sheet pile gives us the freeboard that meets our standards. So it is policy compliant within the Corps of Engineers, we have standards to help protect the people, and that is what this requirement meets. By adding the two feet to the Groveland Avenue levee as it is, that would give us the standards we need. And even though 2013 was a record, what we have modeled, this modeling, is to what's often known as the 100-year flood, or the 1% chance this flood would occur in any given year, the 2013 flood still did not meet that stage. So it could go higher than what it did in 2013.
So if I live, if I live on Groveland, and I'm looking across the street, what am I going, what am I going to see? Am I gonna see two feet of concrete on top of the existing berm?
So what you're gonna see is this sheet pile on top of the existing berm.
Oh, God.
Anything you could do to make it look nicer?
So, what we can do?
Can that be covered with ground and land?
That's what we had talked about before, when I first saw this as well, that's the exact reaction I had. And again, I think we still have some opportunities through the design phase to work with that, to either get a cap with a sidewalk, so that then it becomes an access or a better portal to view into the river, or if that doesn't price out properly, then we can come in there and work to have a landscape package that would come, because I know when you're out there right now, especially like if you get into August timeframe, and the grass starts to grow up, it's kinda actually pretty pleasant, it looks wonderful there. So that would be the thing, would be that some way, this is gonna need to be shielded, right?
So we can look at, in our design process, we could look at capping that with concrete as well. We're getting into the territory of, unfortunately, there's a federal standard, which is that we have to provide you with the bare minimum of what could actually solve the problem. Once we go beyond the bare minimum, once we start to dress it up a little bit, that becomes a local sponsor cost. So we would have to work with the village and Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, as far as what we can afford, and what we can do in that area.
So now moving to the other side, across Forest, on West, and I live there, this is in my backyard.
Yeah.
What do I see when I look at the?
You would see something like this, or like, this one's really hard to see, because it got darker in this projector, something like this, probably without these nice pedestals that somebody probably paid extra for.
And how high would that be, that I'm looking at?
It varies along that entire length. I would have to go back, we actually haven't done the final analysis of how tall it is versus the actual ground level, so I'd have to go back and look at that, but I could get you that answer. How tall is the levee here, do we know?
Six, seven feet.
Six, seven feet? If it's six, seven feet here, you'd probably have at least six to seven feet. If we're adding two feet, so you're talking eight to nine, eight to nine feet of wall.
Would a public land be used, or a private land be used to build a wall or a building?
That is yet to be determined. Right now, it does cut through the parcels, right, the backyards of these parcels of land in here.
So that's private?
So that's private land. There was some thought that there was some right-of-way along the river that could be utilized, but we have to verify that.
That design survey will identify that, and that's what that million-dollar line item is for.
So another question I have is with regard to the benefits of, especially the raising of the park place.
Yeah.
My understanding is that when it floods in that area now, that that could cause surcharging in the interior of the village. So we can have sewer back, sewer surcharging because of the water pressure caused by the flood. So, will this mitigate that effect? So would people further in the interior, further east, also see benefits from this? Not the immediate flood area?
Yeah, so if you are experiencing surcharging from water, being in this area and not allowing storm sewer to get out from this area, then the fact that this is now flood-free should give you some benefits in that case.
I mean, that's, the whole, underneath the water there is completely full, so some of the flooding that you see that bubbles up elsewhere will be mitigated from this, like down on Herrick Road and some of those, they're gonna see an advantage when this happens, because we won't have a head pressure building up, and then our storm system can actually function the way it's supposed to.
So we're gonna get into questions now from you folks, and I also want you to know that in addition to Mr. Zucker from the US Army Corps, we also have two of our village engineers here, Orion Gailey and Don Dressel, so they have also been reviewing the modeling, especially with regard to the question about maple wood, and whether this will in any way negatively impact that area. So they're also here, so they can pitch in to answer any questions. So who would like to get started?
I got one more question.
Okay, please.
When you did the modeling, what was the height of the wall on the side of the bridge?
Oh, so when we do?
618.
Yeah, we built it to 618, basically. So what we do, the modeling has, let me show you, this can be, so we, the modeling takes the profile of the ground at the river, and adjacent to the river, and it basically builds out how the water flows over the land. And what we do is, we say, you know what, right here, the land is now 618 feet tall instead of what it really is. And so, we tell the computer that, and then it acts as if that land is that tall. And so we set it for 618.
So this wall, it's not gonna go like this?
No.
It's gonna go straight across, but it's gonna be?
Yes.
Three feet at one end, maybe five feet, something like that?
Correct.
But it can be level at 618.
Correct. And the, so the wall itself, the concrete wall from the picture here, this has this sheet pile underneath of it, and the sheet pile is driven to an equal depth as well. And that basically provides the stability for the wall to withstand the water pressure from the river pushing against it, keeps it upright and keeping the water out. And so that sheet pile is driven, and the concrete is poured over top of it. The sheet pile gives you the foundation you need to hold the water back.
And one last thing, can you explain a little bit more about the road closure aspect of this?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe Chief Buckley, you can help with that explanation, about what is it exactly you're gonna be putting on Forest?
So, we have several options when it comes to road closures. We've built several different types across the Chicagoland area. We have swing gates, they're basically, I should have brought a picture, darn it. It's basically a wall that swings out to the side, and then when it's time for it to flood, in the middle of the road, we have built a little sleeve, and then the wall swings out, and there's a pipe that drops down into the road and holds that wall in place. And there's also these, it's basically two, two, I don't know what you call it, basically they've got a lot of rubber on the bottom, and you swing them down, and they press against the road and keep a watertight seal. That's option one. We did that at levee 37, it works really well, and we did it at levee 50 in Displanes as well. There's two of those, I can get pictures of them, and I can share them with you. The other option is, what we do is, we build, we build two, the wall will come up to the road, or outside of the road, right-of-way of the road, and there will be built a concrete wall along there, on both sides of it. And then, should the village choose to do that, then they could put a sandbag closure into there. We prefer not to do a sandbag closure, because a lot of people forget to put the sandbag closure in. But if you have the wall that swings in, it's easy to remember just to swing it in. The other option that we've built, we've built ones where you store wall panels in a location, somewhere in your public works, and the public works brings the wall panels out, and they slot in, there's a slot. Those require a little more maintenance, because you have to maintain the slot, tends to fill with dirt and all sorts of grime and stuff, and no one remembers to clean it out until it's time to install it, and then it's an urgent matter. And so, we prefer to stay away from those, but those are some of the options that we can look at and talk about.
So, so in the process, when it goes into the design phase, and they start to look at the options for that, that's when we would come back, meet with Ed Bailey and our public works folks, and figure out what that does to our budget, and which one we would prefer in those. And then balance that out, because obviously we have kind of a historic entry portal there to our village, and we want to make sure that we have something that's aesthetically pleasing, for the 99.9% of the time it's not being used, right?
And we build it in such a way that it's outside the roadway, that it doesn't interfere with traffic, or have any repercussions from people that could drive off the road. You know, it's designed safely, so it would not have any impacts that way. And one of the things with our project partnership is, the village and Metropolitan Water Reclamation District and any representatives you want are invited to be a part of the team of the design as we make these decisions, so that you can speak into that and have the project that you want. project that you hope to have at the end of the day.
How many times has the, Chief, how many times has the water breached the bridge like that?
Well, it's never breached the bridge. It got closed back in 2013, but it never overtopped the bridge and came down the bridge. But the Army Corps has to build it to that level of six eighteen, which would require those closures then. We would never have used them in the past, but if it does get built to the six eighteen level, they would require appointment or having them available, which is when we first discussed this, we talked about the portable ones, because we would have a little more time to get them prepared and get them out there instead of a permanent...
So you're talking, I mean, that's probably about a three, I mean, you're probably going to be two to three, two to three-foot portals, so these are not as big a wall panels as like a big section, right? These are something, you have a trailer, you facilitate a trailer, you have the wall panel set up, and then they have the cleaning tools or a compressor that you blow it out real quick, and then it sits at the public works, and you do a couple drills, and how you go to set them up there, and that's kind of the process that that has.
It also shuts down that road, which shuts down the...
We shut that road down anyway.
Correct, but the road's already shut at that point.
It, it...
But theoretically, if this works as, as planned, that road wouldn't be flooded any longer.
The other side of the bridge, it floods first.
Yeah.
So that road will already be closed before the levee, we'll have to have two extra foot of water before they ever have to put the barrier in, and the road will already have been closed.
So if you can see the aftershock of the one to the right, and you see Forest, please.
And these, these are great questions, and the reason is, is because we've already had them all. And I've had the opportunity to sit through with these planning sessions with these guys, and they've done a really, really thorough job from my perspective of taking everybody in the village's perspective and then trying to weigh it out from a positive-negative balance to see if we can find anything that's negative.
So just going back to, when you said that, that the village and MWRD would be welcome to be part of the design process, who makes the decision? So with, so with regard to this road closure, perhaps the Army Corps wants to put the swing gates in, Riverside would prefer the panels, who gets to decide?
So that would come down to a matter of cost. If you prefer the panels and they cost the same, and then you're willing to operate and maintain them because the operation and maintenance may be higher, then we would say, okay. Now, if the swing gate was super cheap and the panels were, you know, $50,000 more, and you said, "We want the panels," then we'd say, "Okay, Village of Riverside, you want the panels, that's $50,000." Because that is then beyond the scope of what we would consider the best solution. It is, would be an upgrade, but you're, you're allowed to make that upgrade choice.
So, so kind of think about the process. It's very similar to the ones I had to deal with in the military. It's a bolt-on process. The feds will pay the absolute minimum, bare minimum, to have a successful project. And then the local entity that's helping out, in this case MDR, they'll come in and they'll have opportunities to bolt on to make it a little bit better, cover the other 35%. And then there'll be the aesthetic, it's usually the aesthetical pieces that then we all have to talk about whether or not that's something that we want to, and how much we want to try and pitch in and, and make it beautify it. Is that...
One of the things that hasn't been touched upon yet is that 35% is not just dollars. That's also staff time, use of right-of-way, things of that sort. So we get credits for certain things as well. So we may not be paying dollars, so to speak. We may have salaried employees that are doing the work on behalf of the village, the Army Corps of Engineers, MWRD, so.
Chief, when we have a flood event, what is all parking, cost to the village, manpower, even when we don't have a flood event, no word? Monitoring and what?
I actually pulled two different numbers. One was from 1997, where the level got to 8.45 feet, which technically wasn't a flood event. And the village, cost of building about $32,000 in preparation for that event. Back in 2008, the water level got to 9.87 feet, and we looked at those costs, and it was 78,000 is what it cost the village.
What it cost us in 2013, it had to be a lot.
Yeah.
So before we move to questions, Orion or Don, did you want to add anything to what you've heard so far? These are, these are our representatives from Christopher Burke Engineering and the village engineers.
Thank you. Again, Don Dressel with Christopher Burke Engineering. I work in the Water Resources Department, and the village asked us to review what the Corps of Engineers had done as far as the modeling that you have seen tonight that shows that there's no impact to the surrounding area, both downstream and upstream. And we went through these models, we vetted those models, and we concur with what the Corps has said, that with this project in place as proposed as now, will not cause an impact either upstream or downstream. So that's really what our involvement was at this point.
Thank you. Okay, so let's get to questions. And I can say, you're going to have to make your way best you can up to the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. So if you can, ma'am, you want to come up?
On the, on the photo there...
Yes, yes, if you could step up to the microphone. We want to get a take.
On the photo there, you're showing water in the street, which I presume to be Maplewood Road. Is that correct?
Are you talking about this area here?
Correct.
Yes, probably that would be Maplewood.
Okay. So where did you get, where did you get that information?
So that came from the model.
What, what, the model of what?
The, the model that we built to tell us what happens when the river floods.
Okay, and are you basically indicating that the river flows through the yards and out into the street?
I don't know how that water gets there, but somehow that water does indicate, the model indicates that water gets to that point.
Okay. As a 24-year resident of Maplewood Road, there has never been river water in the street. It has never flowed through the yards, it has never been in the street. So given that flaw there, how do we know there aren't other flaws in the plan?
Well, this is not a flaw, I have to remind you...
No, that is a flaw, because that is incorrect data right there.
I'm going to weigh in on this, because that's not. You're telling him that he's a liar, and we don't do that.
No, I didn't say he was a liar. I'm saying the data is flawed.
The level goes up. We've never seen that flood, but that's the flood he has to get to. That's what I'm trying to tell you. So, what's that?
We have seen...
Not according to the Army Corps of Engineers' depth. That's, and that was hard for me to, that was hard for me to get my arms around before too, because I had kind of the same reaction, like, I've driven down Maplewood to get back there to try and figure that out. And so what, what that is, is that they take it, and that's why they need that darn other two-foot, right? The six eighteen, because if we could do this at the cost of it, you've got to remember before everybody was going to pay for this, we were trying to figure out what the cost that Riverside would have to borne for all of us, with, whether it be a bond or something like that way to pay for it. And that other two-foot is an expensive additional two-foot. So to try and really drill into that, then what we found out was, is that these guys are up against a wall where they have to raise the water level higher than we've ever seen it. What would, do we know what that would be? Because we saw 1183.
That's two feet higher than our 2013 crest, 1142, so add two feet to it.
So that would be, this, this simulation in that drawing right there is what would happen if we had a flood stage that would go to 13, eight-something, right? Almost 14. So that's why I wanted to try and, to try and clarify that. That's why we haven't seen that happen, but that's what the model shows at a hundred-year flood per the criteria that they make us look at.
Hundred plus two.
Right? Hundred plus two.
This is just a, but this is a hundred-year flood level. We have to build to plus two, but this is what would happen if we actually got a hundred-year flood.
So does that, because I just wanted to try and, I don't want people to get into class, I want everybody to understand why, why it looks like that, because those of you that live over there are going to say, which is exactly what you said, "I've never seen that BS." But the key is, is they have to take the water up higher, and so that's what you would suffer at that level. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, and I'm not calling anybody a liar. I'm just saying that we've never seen that.
Yeah, and, and I think that they, they know that. They heard that loud and clear from all of us too, right? Who said, "Time out, before you present this, be ready for that question, because I don't think I've ever witnessed that, and I know I drove down that road during 2013." So we, we, you know, we experienced that, so we know that this would be two-foot higher than we experienced in 213. That's what it would look like, with the wall and without the wall.
Correct.
Right?
Yes. So we have not yet gotten to the level that you would see that type of flood. You haven't experienced it yet.
I'm done.
Who's next, sir?
So your drawing is all based on elevation, and that elevation doesn't take into consideration...
Mr. Sherman, step up here, please.
Bill Sherman with the Fire Department. That elevation doesn't take into consideration the sewer system that's in the street, which that little bit of flow that's coming in there is going to be, go north through the sewer system and out. So that's, that's always a possibility.
That is always a possibility, yes. That, that could, that could not have, it's possible that your sewer system would take care of that, and it wouldn't be there.
How do, how do we get to her answer? Because that's a really good one. How do we get to how the water gets there?
I would have to go back and look at that. We'd have to dig into the, we'd have to zoom in on the, the model in that area and figure that out.
Because I think that's a very important thing to understand, is how, how that, where that happens at, right?
Right.
That's a very fair, that's a very fair and reasonable question, because as you run the model, there's no breach, per se, if I can use that word, unless there's a culvert or something that's letting it come up that direction.
Yeah, we'd have to go back and dig in. We could, we weren't particularly concerned about this area because it is in a roadway, it's not in people's homes, so we didn't investigate that portion of it to see why it's there. We weren't, we, we weren't trying to solve that problem, so we didn't really dig into that.
Yeah, you might, because I heard, I heard Demong and Grothland. So he's, again, when they look at this, they're looking for property loss and FEMA flood insurance bills and things like that. So they're all looking at property damage that then comes back to end up being a cost, because the only reason they're going to pay for this, right, is because there's some ultimate return on somebody's investment, right? So, so think about it, when you think about some of these answers, think about it from that perspective, because if it sits in the street, a guy like him, no offense, is going to take it like, no big deal, right? But to those of us that have to get to our house or our home, it is a big deal, right? And if it's sitting in your yard and ruins your flowers and you can't do stuff, or fills your pool up, or whatever it does, that's a big deal. Those, those structures are not really considered in that. It's the physical residential homes that end up having an insurance payment. That's where you guys weigh into it, and that's why they give us 65%, right? So again, it's trying, I'm just trying to help balance out their perspectives so that you guys can see it.
And it's not that we don't care. We do like to not have water in streets too, but we just, it's not part of our requirement to look at that at this time.
We have our next question, sir.
Yes, Nick Lambros, 276 Maplewood, been a resident there for about 19 years. So I understand this correctly, the image on the right is with the wall.
Correct.
The image on the left is what currently happens?
Correct.
How, if it's currently happening, and that's Maplewood, or the Maplewood area up there, there is no water there currently, even in 2013. We had September 10th, 2014, September 10th, sorry, September 14th, 2010.
Yeah.
October 18th of, no. September, it was April 18th of 2013 when we had the floods.
2013, 2010, 2018.
Maplewood never had water on the street.
Right.
And you're showing water before the wall. So this is what she brought up, this is what I'm questioning.
Right, and so the answer to that is, is that the water levels that we've experienced in the floods so far, all those flood events that you've lived through, do not rise to the level of an actual hundred-year flood.
Then why show them?
Because that's what we have to...
We want to see the actual, what, what is there now, and what is going to be. Not what could happen, we know what could happen. If that's what historically has happened, you're not showing us what has happened. What happened in 20, is that 2013?
No, this is, this is the hundred-year flood.
What might happen.
This is what might happen. Correct.
Can, can we get to that? Because we might be able to do a third slide where you stop the model...
At 2013, I can do that.
At 2013.
I can do that, yes.
Right? And so what you'll see is you'll see almost the same thing, because if you watch it really slow, if you have it on your computer screen and drag it over there, you can actually stop it, you'll see the line closest to the river is about right where it's at. It's not in the street yet on, on Maplewood, and it's fully inundated down below here. Because when, when you get to the tail end of that model, the line starts to move really, really slow, because it has so much more area to fill to go up, right? So it'll, 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 it'll go in there real fast, and then as that line creeps out, it just goes painfully slow.
Correct.
Yes, that's a great idea, because if, because if the concern, and I, I think this is all of our concerns, is this is modeled. This is the best educated scientific guess as to what would happen. But if we could, if you could actually run this model with the 2013 level...
1183.
We can then compare that to our, our own personal knowledge of what actually happened, and that will either give more credit or cast more doubt on modeling, so that would be a really good thing to do.
Because I, I think the folks over on Kimbark would probably have the same observation, right? The little spot right there at Kimbark where it has kind of a little hook in the one on the left, they're going to probably, somebody, whoever's home that is, is probably going to say, "I've never seen that happen," right? Because again, that's what happens when we gain another two-foot of water.
So we'll do that. We'll have, we'll have our, our engineers...
If I could also, and that'll be my last comment, make a comment, when my wife and I approached the Army Corps of Engineers and we petitioned for a berm in our backyard, which is up against the river, we were, our petition was immediately thrown out stating that it was an improper use of the flood zone. But suddenly, it's okay to do an increased berm on top of what we have here. It's just interesting how, when a homeowner wants to take steps to mitigate losses, and we've had losses for the four floods that we've experienced totaling $560,000 during those four floods, it's interesting how we're not allowed to mitigate the losses because it's an improper use of the floodway, but the Army Corps of Engineers is now graciously opting to suggest a bigger berm that is okay. That's what I'm disappointed with.
Mr. Miller, you had some...
Yes, I was going to say, they're going to...
You, can you need to come up to the microphone, please?
What year? Four floods.
What year did you...
Yeah, Jeff Miller, 240 Maplewood. I was going to say, if they're going to, if they're going to redo this, it'd be good if they could magnify these pictures a little bit, because it's a little bit hard to see, because all of us got to know kind of in detail certain areas. So if they can blow up the magnification by a factor of 10 or something like that, then you could see, oh yeah, where, where the lines are, and it'd be much easier to judge.
And, and I think that you're, you're right, because on the computer, you can zoom in.
Exactly.
So you can zoom in, and you can look at what's happening, like, we, we spent a lot of time right around the home that ends up being on an island to try and see where that's going to happen at, right? So I think that's fair and reasonable. And I don't know, how, how do you guys, do you publish on a website or something?
We could, we could get them to you to, to put up...
Yeah, so, because again, again, speaking from my perspective, I was able to pull up the, the studies when we saw them preparing for this meeting, and you can, you can actually zoom up and look at the intersection, and zoom up and kind of better see how it's going to do. And I, everybody needs to do that. They need to understand how it's going to impact their own personal property.
Because two feet is a lot. I mean, two feet is a lot relative to what it has been, 2013, that's, that's a huge increase. And I'm guessing that if there really were two feet, there's going to be a lot of houses that were not flooded that would be flooded. I don't, it's hard for me to see with this resolution, but, so I'm, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, but if I can share playing around with that, if you drag it, if you, if you have the chance to drag it at the bottom.
Yeah.
It's really interesting how, how slow, even though it's, how slow it takes to grow outward, because it all starts to go west, and it has to fill up all the area behind the high school there. If you kind of look at the ball fields there. So once it starts to breach that way, the line on that side grows much faster than the line on our side.
But, but if you're saying two feet, two feet's two feet, right? So it doesn't matter how far west it's gone, so.
Yeah.
And I know, I know exactly how high it got, at least on one property. And I know where two feet would be. And so I'm curious to see that in better resolution. That's, that's my only comment, thank you.
Kaisa Johnson, we're property owners of 87 Groveland for the last 57 years. I have a lot of concerns, but I'll go down to two. Could we bring the schedule slide back up, please? So, finalizing the engineering, okay, the partnership agreement. How much of the design has to be done before they're actually going to say, yeah, we're going to go forward with this? Because I'm hearing a lot of, I'm unsure's, which is lots of big money items. We're not sure what the infrastructure is along the north wall. We're not sure if we have right-of-way. There's a lot of unsure's to be, you know, entering. If I were going to enter an agreement, I wouldn't enter an agreement that soon with that many unsure's. And also, what is our actual public comment period? Because getting a notice six days ago about this meeting does not constitute, I would say, public comment, especially since there wasn't an access, where do you access the information, and all that was not on there. It was, if you have questions, you know, contact the fire chief. So I have those questions about the, the time period, and then I have another follow-up.
Okay, so to go, let me try and go through step by step. So the unsure's, so this cost estimate that you see here with the lands and damages and the relocations, what we've heard from the village is that there's a possibility that some of those right-of-ways wouldn't be necessary. What we have assumed at this point in time is the worst-case scenario, and assuming that we need to buy the most land necessary from the landowners in that place to come up with these, these dollar amounts. So we have assumed the worst-case scenario as far as lands and damages and relocations. So the unsureness is, does the village or someone that can provide the right-of-way outside of a homeowner's land parcel, do, can they provide that to us? So we would look at that, and what that would do would be decrease our lands and damages and possibly our relocations. So that would actually decrease the costs. There are some things in there, basically, the project engineering and design is the final design. What we have here is what we call a planning-level design, and that includes a contingency amount. And on this project, contingency amount, contingency amount is 35%. And that covers all the possible changes that we could incur during that design, engineering and design portion.
35% of the engineering design?
35%, no, of the entire project. So the actual project, if we costed it out, costs 35% less than that actual total project cost, according to our plans right now. So we said, you know what? There are some features in here that are uncertain. There's some things that we know that we have to get into more detailed design that will get us the details that we need to be able to say for sure what that cost is. And so we account for that by putting a contingency in the actual cost estimate. And that's given to the project partnership agreement upfront. We let you know what the contingency cost is, and we work really hard to try and stay within that contingency. And then you had, so that was the first one. The second one, remind me?
The second one I hadn't, went forward, yes.
Okay.
But with regard to the public comment.
Well, the comment period.
Talk about the design phase, because there's, there's opportunities at that time.
Yeah, so we will work with the village during the project engineering and design phase to coordinate with them, and at their request, bring it back to the public for comment. We would work with them to do future public comment periods like this, public comment interactions. The public comment period, if you're, if you're referring to actually a report, on the report itself occurred back in 2013. This is a piece of that that has broken off, like, in terms of the Corps of Engineers. But as far as public comment for the village, I don't know what the requirements for that would be, or.
So, so, I don't know if you want to speak to your, I can. So like, as exact, they're 50% of the way through, and they provide plans to all the partners to review. At that point in time, then the village would have the space upstairs, everybody come in. They put, you know, easels up with all the different drawings and plans and things. Have the engineers that are there come in, sit there, and then people can come in and ask questions and look and.
Okay, but that's not having access to, I mean, coming there one time and being there for an hour or so in whatever's being presented, is not providing us with all the information that we might need to look at things, mull over, think of things, have the time to process it. You know, lots of times with large public projects, you've got 30 or 45-day public comment periods.
Well, that's why we started this process preliminary as just the presentation, for them to roll out this project for residents, to solicit feedback from the village board and residents alike, and get that additional feedback, and have follow-up meetings with Army Corps, and then continue this public discussion process. That's why we have not engaged in a PPA yet, that, that, that agreement that was mentioned, so that we can have this dialogue with residents and get this feedback that we need as staff and also our engineers need as well.
So when I saw this schedule, I was wondering how come it's taking so long? And one of the questions were, is during the engineering and design phase, we have mandated periods of time where we have to allow public comment, which those would fit into there. So within that, July 2018 to September 2019, there'll be big chunks of time in there where we can get input from people, feed it back to these guys, get questions from you, have them answer those questions, and work through that process.
And we can flex the schedule around that. That's, it is a variable that we could put in there. Just know that, that could extend the engineering and design time to then change our construction schedule. But that is something that we can work with the village on. We're definitely willing to work with you and make sure that you're satisfied with everything that we do.
I mean, that's our concern. I mean, the, from the very start, I think that we've all, we all knew kind of what the two big issues were going to be. One was going to be the aesthetic question, and the other big one was going to be, because from a layperson's standpoint, it seems common sense that, well, gosh, if you build this, somehow it's going to create more water upstream. Which is why we brought our own engineers in to vet this process. So as we move forward, this is just the opening opportunity. That's all this was intended to be tonight, was just an initial presentation. We want your questions, we want your critiques, we want your observations. And just like with regard to blowing up the magnification of the modeling, we can provide that online. And, you know, as, as we can, as we get responses to your questions, we can provide it so that it's accessible to you online. So you can, so you can view it and open it. So you can have the opportunity to sit and mullet and sync, sync it through. Because that's what, that's what this process is intended to be. So I can guarantee you that there will be ample opportunity for that.
Thank you.
And if residents haven't signed up for our e-flash, I would kindly recommend that you sign up for it, because that's how we push out a lot of our information. We also post it on a trending online, and obviously, this will be a trending topic for many, many months to come. But also, that's the way to stay engaged, to get those push notifications.
I'll just say, I am signed up for the flash, and I didn't get it.
You didn't get?
I didn't get it.
We sent out, we sent out, I think, two e-flashes with regard to the Groveland.
Well, and also, you just, you know, just to, that was why our fire department went around and hand-delivered. How many of you got notices actually delivered to your home?
We got them, yeah.
That's, that's why we did that. Because we know that some people aren't signed up to e-flash, or maybe you're signed up and you get so many, you don't read them all. So that's why we wanted to take that extra step and hand-deliver them.
It's to my phone.
So did you have another question?
I, I did, and you brought up an aspect of it. I'm skeptical, you know, I'm not calling anyone a liar, but I've seen other Army Corps of Engineer projects that are failures. And I would consider the Hoffman Dam a failure, and that's part of what's happening here. You take out part of the dam, and then you choke the river back up. The river is choked up. Has anything been looked at, at getting that unchoked, letting the water flow? It's very counterintuitive. I, it seems to me that your definition of upstream is very narrow. That just, that small cross-section, as opposed to what's actually backing up elsewhere. And, I mean, we always see it, even the fact that they, NOAA took out the, the monitor at Forest Avenue, because that's what's really important for our flooding, not the monitor that's below Hoffman Dam, that doesn't tell us much in the event of a pending flood. But there's still going to be water that's backed up. And when you had those side-by-sides, there, it, it doesn't look like there's really that much difference between what would happen west, as it is now, and with that. You guys keep talking about all that's going to dump west, dump west. You look at the west, and there doesn't look like a lot of difference.
Right, and that's.
So is, is anything being addressed with taking, it doesn't sound like anyone's looked at, taking out some of that fill that's been put in so that the river can clear out and everything doesn't back up to where we are?
Okay, so the, the reason we focused in this area was we knew that there would be concern over what would happen right here as the water flooded up against the wall that would be required to ensure that this area stays dry. So we looked at this specifically to bring here, but that also, our analysis included the river this far and further north, looking at it and making sure that what happens here does not do impacts up here, as well as extending further down. We zoomed in to show the detail here because we knew that that was a concern. I actually was the project manager on the Hoffman Dam project, and so I know a bit of Riverside. You guys are great people. And the, the thing with the, all the dams on the Displanes River is that they're called run-of-the-river dams, which means that run-of-the-river dams hold back water only during low flows. As you would have noticed in 2013, actually, was it out before that? It was out before the 2013. In the 28 or 2004 flood, you couldn't see Hoffman Dam. And even in 2013, you can't see the wing walls that we left in place. And basically, that's because the water actually overwhelms that dam. The dam actually didn't provide any storage in terms of flood reduction. It actually was used to hold water back. And believe it or back, believe it or not, back in the 1900s, the Displanes River used to dry up. You could actually hop across it. And we had people during the Hoffman Dam days tell us about hopping across the Displanes River, which is unbelievable now, especially because there's a base flow to the Displanes River. And it's all the wastewater and the wastewater treatment that comes down through the Displanes River from all the communities. And so the Displanes has a base flow now that didn't exist back in 1900. But the removal of that dam had minor flood benefits. It extended about half a mile upstream from the Hoffman Dam. It opened up that storage area along the sides that were filled with water, but then were now emptied. But it wasn't anything to write home about, because it really didn't save anybody. But it doesn't restrict, it actually opens up the river, and the river runs as it would. The only thing that does restrict the river in that, in that area is, you know, that whole area is walled off. There's the, you know, the tower and the village of Lyons on the other side. All that's all walled, and so that keeps the river channelized in that area. But that's the only thing that restricts it in that area.
So all that rubble you put in, you're telling me doesn't restrict that river?
Oh, there, no, there was no rubble put in, there was, there was stones.
All the fill.
There was no fill that was put in, all that fill was there. We were required to leave the fill there by the US EPA. The EPA determined that fill could not be removed, so we had to keep it in place. We had to put those stones along the banks to stabilize them and ensure that that, that sediment that had come down the river for all those years and collected behind the dam stayed there. And so that was the purpose behind those things. So there was no fill that was put in the river beyond what was necessary to hold the banks in place.
Is the fill dispelled, that is the fill, where you can see when you drive across the bridge, if you were moving west, underneath all the rocks over there? Is that what you're referring to, is the fill?
Upstream of the dam.
Just upstream of the dam? So like there, when you walk around over the bridge, and you look right there, there's kind of a big area there. Right now, there's two big conked trees sitting on there, dried up trees, right? I just want to make sure I understand the fill.
Yeah.
Because that is the.
That's, that's the sediment that.
And again, to kind of add to that, the reason that they make us do that, or they make these guys do that, is because they don't want our, whatever's been accumulated there over time to then flow down and accumulate in Lyons or downstream in Joliet or something like that. So you have to take care of those.
The natural flow of the river is.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to suggest we.
Yeah, we don't need to go into the, to that.
Let's, let's keep the conversation on this project.
But the idea of everything's going west, and it doesn't show there a heck of a lot of difference that, of things going west instead.
But in putting, putting the wall in, just keeps the flow going this, it doesn't actually push it west? The west floods actually earlier than this side does? What this does is the wall keeps the water flowing downstream. So it doesn't actually push it west and make any changes. And that's what we found through our modeling.
If, can we put it on the website, if we could slow it down?
I will work on that.
I think that would be incredibly helpful to see, because if, if, if this one moves so fast, and again, like you said, I have the luxury of stopping it and dragging it and playing with that whole little thing.
Perhaps the old modeling that was super slow?
We can do that, yes. We will adjust it again, and we can get you another copy. You can have this copy and put it up on your website, however you'd like to deal with that, that's fine.
Yeah, my name is Cliff Koch, I live on Maplewood. I have for 40 years, I've seen all the floods. A couple of times, I helped sandbag the levee. The 618 figure you're talking about, that's mean sea level, I would say, right?
The 618 is the.
Elevation, mean sea level?
The elevation, yes, it would be considered trims sea level.
Okay. In all the years, I've seen those things, that place flood. I haven't seen water actually go over the levee. But I see three-foot geysers shooting out of the storm sewers. That's where the water's coming from. So my question to you is, have you corrected that problem? Because the water is, the river water's often two to three feet below the top of the levee, and the water is shooting up in the Groveland and flooding the surrounding area. And I've told everybody that when I witnessed it, and they look at me and they go like this. That's where the water's coming from.
Well, I think, I don't, I haven't actually witnessed it, so I.
Yeah, but I have, many times.
I, I believe you.
Oh, good.
I don't doubt you. But I think what we, what we do know is that the water starts down here in this area, and then it flows across. And there could be.
Yeah, but before that's happening, it's filling up from the geysers.
Right, and what, what could be happening is that as this area floods, it is surcharging your storm sewers, and then it's finding the nearest location to come out. Which, if it's flooding in this area, the nearest location that's going to geyser out is going to be over here in the Groveland area.
But you don't know that for sure. I mean, you don't know the, we haven't studied that yet. We need, I don't, maybe that's something that needs to be looked at too.
Actually, I could, I could answer a little bit.
Yeah, please.
Because we have looked at that back in 94? Exactly, they put in two valves, one at the alley, right in the apron of the alley, where it comes out on the forest, there's a valve there to shut off any water surcharging from the river when it gets to that point. We have seen.
Surcharging from what point?
From the river itself.
Then why does it still do it? Because I've seen these floods.
Those valves are shut when the river level gets to 8.8 feet, and it's, it's expected to go higher.
Okay, I understand that, but I still see, when there's a flood, and it's been since 94, or whenever you said, I see water geysering out of the storm sewer. So that means it's coming from some other location, because you cut those other two lines off.
Once we shut those valves, it stops. Because that's the water surcharging back from the river when it goes to that height.
All right, so we're not going to see that anymore, is what I'm, because if we build this wall, and we got water screwing up out of the sewer, we've got another problem.
Right, our policy is when it gets to 8.8, is when we shut those two valves.
I assume, I, I live on Maplewood. I don't recall you guys surveying the backyards on Maplewood. So you know that those elevations there are all above 618?
So the information that we have for this map is all from what we, what we call LiDAR. It's laser, oh gosh, I didn't, didn't look this up. But basically, all of Cook County is flown over with an airplane that shoots lasers down, and it takes the elevations all across Cook County. And we use that for our planning level exercises here. Some of the cross-sections that are used in the development of the model are actually shot cross-sections. I don't know how many, I could go back and find out for you. But all the, the elevation data in here is LiDAR data that is used throughout Cook County by all of the, by MWRD, by UGAS Corps of Engineers, IDNR.
How precise is the LiDAR data?
So we have done ground truthings, and it is very precise. I couldn't give you an exact number, but it is within inches.
Okay, oh, inches, that's, well, that's so good.
That's my understanding, I will confirm.
And, and the li, the lasers penetrate the canopy, the trees?
So when they fly this, they fly with canopy off. They have specific parameters that have to be met when they actually fly the plane over the area, and that includes that the trees are not in leaf.
These computer models, I'd like to know a little bit more about this. Are they multi-dimensional, linear, exponential? How many terms do they depend, are they dependent on initial conditions? Are they sensitive? Do you have feedback systems? What's the deal? How does it, and how many, how many data inputs do you have here? It's a pretty, pretty movie, but I, a little bit.
Well, again, it's all based on the conditions out there, as we've talked about. You have the latest top graphic information goes in there. You have the model that has been reviewed, and actually has run simulated historical events that everybody's talking about, these historic events. That's what's used to calibrate the model, to verify that it's producing the correct flow rates, the correct elevations. Then you take other historic events, and you run other of them, and then you verify them on, make sure that they're duplicating that. So these models have been going on for years. This is not just the first study, these, these models, these go back many years. They're always being refined, and now we get the latest models that can, as we call them, two-dimensional, where they can look at the flow velocities in different directions. They can look at these flow restrictions and look on how, where they go. That's why it gets very accurate when you're trying to look at a micro system here, where we're looking at this one area, to see what kind of impacts a project such as this would have. And that's why the Corps has come out, and we have looked at the model, and we can say, based on the modeling, that when this levee goes in place, there's not going to be impacts to the surrounding area. And this goes. And this goes all the way upstream for miles and miles and downstream for miles and miles because this model starts down below the Will County line and goes all the way up to Wisconsin. This is one complete model. I mean, you're looking at the, Des Plaines River has 630 square miles of watershed. That's how much water comes in here. The Des Plaines River is a big river, as you know.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And so, that's, that these models are, you know, the latest and greatest tools we have as engineers to evaluate different projects.
You moved your data collection points a few years ago when you did the Hoffman Dam project. And you adjusted all the historical data then to make sure that that all jives. Um, what about doing some modeling on increasing the flow of the river by changing the bridge piers?
That has been looked at by, the Corps of Engineers looked at it. Actually, the MWD when they did, they had lower Des Plaines detailed watershed study a few years ago that was looked at. Um, and it was determined you would get some lower of the 100-year, and we, again, we're talking about the 100-year, but not to the level necessary to provide protection behind the Groveland levee for those homes. You could not lower it enough.
If the levee, levee has never been breached, this is where I'm really having a problem with this. If that's not the issue and we're flooding, then we need to find out why it's flooding.
Well, again...
Right here, it comes in down here.
Okay.
Flows across Forest Avenue, and then it also comes in over here and flows in the neighborhood from up here.
Again, the Groveland lady, levee is not a complete levee. You would agree to that, right?
Yeah, I just covered...
It's a north-south piece.
Yeah, I agree.
It doesn't protect water coming in from the north, and it doesn't protect, protect water coming in from the south. And that's what the Corps of Engineers project is proposing to do, is to protect that whole area from these points where the water comes in from the Des Plaines River. They are also proposing to have pump stations within the interior that will then be able to take the interior drainage that you're talking about and pump it out to the river.
And that's a good thing. We need that anyway. But why don't we just block off the entry points and, and leave the existing levee that seems to be performing?
Well, the, the existing levee is being left. It's going to be...
Instead of raising it, just block off the...
No, it's been, it's been upgraded, and of course, the Corps doesn't know if it has a clay core, let's say, in there. That's why they're proposing a sheet pile that's going to go down deep and provide protection so water can't go underneath that levee that provide protection. But also, they need to look at this 100-year level. Again, people out here keep referring to the April 2013 event, September 2008. Those were not to the same level that FEMA is showing as 100-year flood profile here. It's still two feet or so below what that. So, that's why the Corps needs to design this, in which they should design it, to a level that you might expect in the future. And then, in top of that, they have to add freeboard in case there's an event bigger than 100 years. Say, you know, we always say, there's a 500-year or Noah's flood. You're trying to provide protection for that. That's why you add freeboard. You try to get as high as possible. Do it once, make it good.
Guys, are you, we need to get some other votes opportunity.
Hi, Lois. Come on in. Longtime resident of Groveland Avenue. I just wanted to ask you, I believe, for the current levee that's on Groveland, there was an environmental study, and I wondered if there was going to be another or is currently an environmental study that we could also look at. Second question is, um, will there be vegetation trees as there were in the original or the current berm affected by this extension?
Okay. Environmental study, I mean, did someone...
There was an environmental ass, assessment.
Uh, done by...
Oh, I don't remember who did it.
Okay. Um, well, we, I mean, coming in, we would take a look at what's there. We would possibly take some samples. We don't have any indication there's any contamination there.
No, no, no. I'm talking about like an environmental impact or environmental assessment for, for...
Oh, yeah. So, this, uh, as being part of the Upper Des Plaines Phase Two, the environmental assessment was done as part of that.
With that?
Even though it was approved in 2013.
Okay.
It's still valid. It's still good.
But the design has changed a bit since then?
Uh, the design is still the same. Even if we put the flood wall in, in place of the road rays, it would not impact, make any impacts or changes to the actual, I mean, what we've modeled and what we anticipate being any environmental impacts to that.
Okay.
So, that would not have any, uh, and that, that document is available on our website on the Upper Des Plaines. I will make sure that, Jessica, that you have that and you can put that on there. Uh, the, the full report is available for anyone to read. It's a couple thousand pages long. But if you needed to fall asleep real quick at night, have at it. Um, but it, it's there and it is available, and it does a comprehensive job of looking at the environmental assessment throughout the project and what this would do for that. As far as vegetation on the levee, uh, one of the rules that the Corps has is that vegetation is not allowed to be on the levee. And so, as part of this project, we'd be removing that vegetation. Vegetation growing, such as trees and shrubs, provides pathways through a levee that we would not want to have available for water to follow. Uh, and so, any trees that are currently on that levee would be removed as part of the process.
And how, do we have any sort of visual as far as...
Uh, so, we would do 15 feet on either side. Uh, I don't think there's 15 feet on the riverside probably. There is, uh, so 15 feet to the river, 15 feet in the, to the back. That's the, the clear area around it that we would require.
So, from street to about, almost to the center of the wall would be, we, we, that's, that's going to be the challenge to try and figure out how we can landscape that to, to mitigate if, in fact, the pier piling has to stay exposed. But if we can get a concrete cap, it might be a concrete wall that we've developed, and then we can have some ground grasses and things like that. It's the big root balls that they appear to be having a problem with.
Things like...
So, 15 foot toward the river, then we do have some area that's going to be, the type of tree that we could get to grow there usually are not the best trees because they're soaked all the time, right? Mud, mud's slowed down in there, but so, but that is the 15-foot both sides. Oh, there's 15 feet of both sides right now.
15, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for the question.
Yes, sir.
I'm Pete Kosker, a 28-year resident of the First Division. Uh, we have a Des Plaines River kind of circling us, and I'm a retired engineer. I've noticed that there are significant restrictions to the flow of the Des Plaines River at the old Hoffman Dam location and upstream of there particularly, headed west of the Hoffman Dam before the Des Plaines River makes, and we're going upstream on the Des Plaines, before the Des Plaines River makes the turn going, going north. And, uh, the, uh, these flow restrictions are quite obvious. You see white caps in the middle of a river. Uh, and, um, if you're on the, uh, uh, bridge overlooking where the Hoffman Dam was, you can see about a three-foot drop in the water level of a river over about a 30-foot, uh, distance back. Little mini rapids or something. And as you go about 100 yards up and you're still standing on the bridge, you can see white caps up there wherever the river makes a turn. That's a flow restriction, a significant one. And then, as you go further up the river, there's more of them. And, uh, if these flow restrictions are removed, the flooding, uh, see in the area of Forest Avenue and so on, is reduced. The more water you can pass down through there, the less water is going to be retained up, upstream. And the, uh, other thing is railroad bridge. If you are south of a railroad bridge looking upstream, it's created like little islands at the pylons of that railroad bridge. And, uh, the bridge should have been built with the pylons parallel to the water flow, not diagonal to the water flow. And that's given, that's another flow restriction. And it would be interesting to see what the Corps of Engineers model would result if these flow restrictions are removed. Uh, wherever the river is now like a bigger pipe, uh, you know, like if you have a house and you've got a sewer drain that's got stuff in it, you have a flow restriction. So, what do you do? You clean it out. Well, maybe the river needs some cleaning out, particularly in the western journey upstream from where the Hoffman Dam, uh, is, is located. The, um, area by the railroad bridge is a little harder nut to crack. Uh, it's an old bridge. It's been raised several times. Originally, there was a grade crossing at First Avenue. Then in the late 30s, they elevate, started, created a grade and elevated, uh, the railroad, so railroad overpassed First Avenue. And sometime in the 50s, they took the steel bridge curbers out and put concrete ones. Yeah. Uh, so, uh, seems to me, and right now, I, just yesterday, took a walk up in that area. There's been a, a lot of earth moving on the east side of a river at the, at the railroad bridge. I don't know if you're in the process of doing something there or not, but, um, so, I would think that it'd be prudent to eliminate these existing downstream flow restrictions that cause water to back up upstream. Uh, because that would have a significant impact on the results of your flooding models and so on.
Mr. Zucker, can you, can you respond to this?
Pardon?
I'm asking him to respond to your question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, as Don mentioned, uh, the Corps of Engineers, the Department of Natural Resources, even MWD has looked at straightening the piers for that railroad bridge.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, straightening the piers does not get us the reduction in flood levels that would, that would benefit the neighborhood here. It's a significantly bigger project. It would reduce the water levels to some extent, but not to the extent that would save people in these neighborhoods from the flooding. Uh, the flow restrictions that you're talking about there, those are anomalies that you see at low water levels, but not at the high water levels when the wa, uh, the river is running. Uh, we know for a fact that when, where Hoffman Dam was placed, there was historically a waterfall there. Uh, we were looking for it when we took the dam out, and we think that's what we found with that three-foot drop. Um, and what you see with the white caps as the water curves around there, uh, we believe that that's underwater riffles that have formed as the, the river takes its natural course again. After having been backed up by the Hoffman Dam for so many years, it was very channelized. It was very straight-running. Uh, when we took the Hoffman Dam out, the water was allowed to run back to its natural course, and it's found its natural flow again. Uh, and I wouldn't be surprised in another 10 years if you came back, if that was gone and in a different location. Uh, because the river is going to seek its, its course. It's going to meander around, uh, and it will change that, that structure that you see over time. Um, so, in general, when we look at rivers and in flooding, uh, a lot of people like to think that if you go and you dredge a river, that it will help solve all of the flooding problems. Unfortunately, making the river deeper only lowers the water during normal times, and you still see higher flow levels during a flood event. Uh, and so, you don't get the benefits from it. The other problem is, is that when you dredge a river, you can't just dredge it in one location. We'd have to take river bottom out from here all the way up into Wisconsin and dispose of all that material in order to make any sort of difference that would do anything for flood protection.
Well, I think upstream from the area where we're talking about, uh, putting a, uh, flood wall in, uh, wouldn't really change if you didn't do anything up there. But I, I can see where taking stuff out, I mean, it's, you like having underwater dam. Uh, and if you, if you take out the, um, area around the Hoffman Dam, that's going to expose other restrictions upstream. So, you take those out and you just work your way up, and you'll have a much faster, higher cubic feet per second flow.
Well, what you're referring to is the riffles, the normal natural riffles that occur from stones and other things that are on the bottom of the river. Hold on. Um, because what you're referring to is flow restrictions such as Hoffman Dam, which I explained earlier, is a run-of-the-river dam, which actually only holds water back in low-flow events.
I agree.
Right? And so, when we get into the high flow and the floods, all those little bumps on the bottom, all those stones, all those riffles that are created by the river, they're just overwhelmed completely by the flow and the amount of water that is going through there. So, you don't even see it. You don't even, it doesn't impact the top level. It has nothing to do with the water level that is reached during a flood event.
Okay. Thank you.
Next question.
Hi, everyone. I really hate doing this. I don't like talking in front of people very much. I'm a good presenter, but that's when I have all and I can practice. This, I can't practice much anyway. My name's Lisa Garay. My husband, Dan Myers, and I live at 77 Lincoln Avenue. We have two children. My daughter is 14 and my son is 10, and I really need to get home because they are alone. So, here's what I have to say. First of all, thank you for looking into this problem. Again, our house sits right in the middle of that blue blob there on the left, and I have to say that I didn't understand at first that that's, that actually hasn't happened yet, but I thought it did because living where I do, I lived through this twice in the fall of 2008 when my daughter was four, and again in 2013 when she was a bit older and my son was around as well. And I have to say that I'm getting emotional because this, these two events were very difficult for my family. We had to move out of our house. We didn't have any electricity. We had no heat. We had no water. We had nothing. And I had little children at the time, and I'm sorry, I'm getting upset, but I know that I speak for myself and for a few of my neighbors back there who have lived through this. So, thank you for looking into this. Anything that you can do, I realize that our house is in flood plain. It's kind of, you know, we knew that when we bought it, so that's our own fault, I guess, for doing that. But, you know, oh, the 100-year flood, you know, oh, you know, whatever. So, I take responsibility for buying a house in this. So, anything that you can do to alleviate some of these issues for my family and my neighbors, I greatly appreciate it. So, my question is, I had another, was talking to one of our neighbors, so we all have to pay flood insurance, and, you know, I'm really glad we have it because we've had to use it twice, and it's still a huge expense because deductibles on flood insurance are $5,000. So, that's, we've had two floods. So, you can, you know how much money that adds up to and the other money for things that they didn't cover and all the rest of it. So, I guess my question is, it seems that there's, we're still going to be in the flood plain, and I hear it's because we don't have enough high water to get to, to tie all this into. And my guess would be that the cost to get to taking us out of the flood plain would be astronomical, and I wondered if you'd run any numbers on that or, I mean, at some point, I know, I know it's going to be high, but just, it was a question that someone had, and like, I don't think it's really feasible, but anything that we could all do would be great. And I appreciate everyone else's concerns because I know folks that live in Groveland would have to look at the flood wall, and there's concerns about the aesthetics and the landscaping and all of that. And I appreciate all of that, and also the folks that live in Maplewood because it impacts them too. But anyway, that was my question.
So, when we looked for high ground, we ran out as far as we could. Unfortunately, we can't put a flood wall through houses.
Right.
You know, it just doesn't work real well. So, to get past 618 to the point where we could actually tie in to high ground is well out here somewhere, where we would have to zigzag through homes and other things that would add great expense to this. We'd also have to, you know, shut down the road, put a street closure in and some other things. There are other options that we looked at. Where can I go that will... We did look at the possibility of tying into high ground up here. It would mean building a wall all along this entire stretch, and it's just, it does get very expensive, and I think that that project had been proposed in the past and had not made it through the process of saying, yes, we can do that. And I know that MWRD looked at that. I think unfortunately, what that does is tie in all the way in up through here, drives our expenses so high that we don't have enough benefits down here.
That was my guess.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the federal government requires us, for every dollar that we spend, we have to save a dollar. And right now, we're at, the benefit-cost ratio on this is like 1.9 in a good economy, and the way that they look at it budget-wise, it's 1.04. So, if we increase the cost too much, it goes, it drives us below 1, it makes us unbuildable, unfortunately.
That's kinda what I figured.
I understand your, I understand your concern about the flood insurance, and, believe me, if we could find a way to tie it in and make it work with FEMA, that they'd be able to do it, we will, we would do it. We'll take another look at it as we go through the design, and maybe we have enough that we can apply. We'll have to see though. We can't guarantee anything.
It's okay.
At this point, our thought is no, but if that changes, at least it'd be in your favor.
Before that point, what their word 620 would be, like you showed me that very first meeting? 620 is what, right? At the base of 26th Street?
I think so.
So, we'd have to get from 26th Street all the way down to the railroad bridge.
Is it even 31st?
Is that right? Oh, 31st, I'm sorry. Thank you, man. From 31st Street, and if you would go perpendicular to Park, or you just keep extending the line out to Park, that's way out there, about behind the high school baseball diamonds, there, the junior high baseball diamond, right in there. So, that's, that kinda shows you, when I asked the exact same question, how do we get this to be, to get, to drive to the 620, to get outside of the flood insurance piece? Because that's pretty, if you can get out to there, there should be a minimized risk of going through the torment that you go through. So, but 618, and then kinda looking at a good, better, best, trying to figure out how we can get, and how much we can, we can get other people to pay for on our behalf is kinda the way they developed the little L-shaped one.
Kind of to tie into your question earlier about the credits that the village can apply for, I think if the village is aggressive with getting those credits, I think it does have impacts to flood insurance costs.
Yeah.
So, we would encourage the village to keep living in that and working there.
I remember hearing about that.
But again, even if we were to build this and it was FEMA-certified, we would recommend that anyone behind the levy continue to carry flood insurance, because the next big event could be big enough to go over top, even with free board and such. And so, we are, you know, it used to be, oh, yay, they're rid of your flood insurance, and now we say, no, don't get it. Don't get rid of your flood insurance.
Thank you.
So, just to give you some idea, we haven't done a precise count, but our estimate is that by doing this in the area that would be protected, we're looking at over 50 homes, and of course, we have department buildings there as well. So, this would be a substantial protection for folks that have been through, or should have been through twice.
Would this decrease our employees' pay for insurance? Not eliminated, but maybe just bring it out?
The question is, would this possibly decrease?
Yeah, I did a little research on that to, when we were kinda starting to look at it, and I found no, no position where, you're either in or you're out, it seems like, on that, right?
Because our earnings have tripled from that event 12 years ago.
Each time we have a water event, they're gonna try and recoup their money somehow, right? So, again, if we can reduce, now, having said that, if we can reduce the water events, then they may start to go back down to 2008, 2000, because the frequency drives that as well.
Well, I don't have a life, so...
Yes, sir, please.
I'm gonna keep it really short and brief. I have not even lived here one year yet. I'm on 95 Grohlwood Avenue. Yeah, that's a lot of looks I just got from everybody. My name's Romney Cirillo. My girlfriend, Jeanette, and I made the decision last May to move to the beautiful town of Riverside, and in that also occurred, learning a lot about flood and flood insurance. We're happy where we're at. One thing I just wanted to bring across, and I don't know if this is a question for the Engineer, Army, or Corps, or if it's for our city, but I'm sure a lot of people have noticed at the Forest Ave Bridge, unfortunately, the aesthetic engineering of that is pretty low, and a large number of debris collects underneath there. Our neighbors that live next to us, that have been in the area for 30 years, have reached out to, I guess Springfield, in order to get that taken care of. I wanted to know strictly from you guys, if there's somebody that we could be calling within the village, or where, because I guess they had to go further.
I can answer that.
Yeah, this is a longstanding issue.
I usually get those calls, and we actually do go out pretty periodically and check the river or the bridges to look for any strainers or debris that are there. I have some counterparts here from Cook County Homeland Security. They have a direct link to a site called Clearstream, which is through the Water Reclamation District. They then reach out to the state. The state who owns the bridges will then come and clean them. The only bridge that isn't owned by the state that is in our jurisdiction is Berry Point Bridge. That's owned by the county, and then the county will come out and clean any strainers or debris that's caught up.
Does the village contact the state at all in the concern?
We don't call the state directly. We go through Clearstream. They have a direct link to them, and they're out there pretty quickly when we do call. In fact, somebody brought it up this evening, that there is some stuff at the 31st Street Bridge, and I'll be notifying them by the time we're done tonight.
There's some stuff at the forest. I mean, it's...
Yes. It's a constant cleanup of debris. I know the state sometimes waits till it gets a little bit worse, or if they know that there's an event coming, if they get, you know, if we know we're gonna have heavy rains next week, they're gonna get out there earlier and try to clean some of that up.
I just wanted to be known, it's been at least a month, if not longer, that there's been a significant, I mean, there's a tree trunk.
Yeah.
That's collected in the middle.
It's a, it's a constant cleanup with all the bridges.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
And you're always welcome to reach out to me and...
Thank you.
Let us know, and then we get ahold of them right away.
I appreciate it.
Miss?
My name is Mary Aaron-Jay. I'm at 14 West Avenue, and I have some specific concerns, I think, for those of us on West Avenue who, there's not a street in front of us. There is, we are going to have that in our yards, so there are some real concerns. And I recognize that there, you have to balance the interests of the residents here who will be benefited by potential flood protection, but there are also those of us, I have a real fear that my property value will absolutely be decreased. And there are several questions I have related to that. You indicated $513,632 estimated into the budget for the buybacks. How many properties are estimated to be part of that?
I would have to look that up and get back to you on the properties, but wherever property is touched by...
Because along west, there must be...
But again, it's not the entire, I think you're thinking you're buying the whole property.
No, I know you're not. No. I understand.
I could do a quick count, I have another view of this, but we could do a count of, we have the parcel outlays, and we could count how many this cuts through, and we can give you that number.
That would be good, because it would have a direct impact on basically, how much of my land you're buying back and what I'm getting reimbursed.
Yeah.
That's why I wanna know.
Yeah. We would, we would have an entire process that we would go through in terms of valuation and negotiation with the landowners.
So, one of the other things, if I heard you correctly, I would also like to know how much of my land you would be required to take for this project. If I heard you correctly, it was 15 feet?
It would vary.
It would vary from the property line. So, basically, we would build a wall that is about one and a half, possibly two feet wide. That would be, that would be the area that would be occupied by the wall. We would, we would take a, a ownership interest on the property side, I think it's 15 feet, but I'd have to double-check that.
Okay.
But that, just because we take the ownership interest, that just gives us the right to maintain the wall and to ensure that nothing encroaches upon the wall, that there's nothing that would prevent people from utilizing that land that is behind their homes still, in terms of walking on it, being there, enjoying it, that kind of thing.
So, in relation specifically to that, part of the reason we bought there was because we have river access, a kayak. We will lose that, and we will have a wall in our backyard. So, what recourse do we have, or will that be directly factored into the amount of the buyback given to us? Because it is, it is a definite change to the property that we bought.
So, I don't have an answer for the recreational value of what that would be in consideration of payment for your property. We'd have to talk with our real estate experts to discuss that.
But is it correct that we will no longer have access from our yard?
So, again, I think, as a fellow kayaker that uses it all the time, I love it too. So, the piece that he doesn't get a chance to control, because they can only do whatever it is to stop the water, then our intent is, is to work with the other partners to give us kayak access. Don't know where it would be at, because that design phase, we kinda shake that out, and how that would happen.
Okay.
Right? So, the key there is, is that the overall goal is to utilize these guys, as far as we can get them to pay for water mitigation opportunities, and then look to other resources to try and then make it into a recreational positive, rather than a visual and recreational make it.
Okay. That's encouraging. The construction period, potentially up to two years. Our backyards, hello trucks, hello, all that equipment. What's the issue? How do we, what happens?
Yes.
I mean, that is our backyard.
It is your backyard.
You know, I, for all of you who get flood benefit from this, God bless you, but I have the potential of trucks in my backyard for months at a time.
Yeah. So, the construction of this will be, it, I mean, it will be over possibly a two, a full two-year period.
Yep.
I don't anticipate it would be in everyone's backyard for that long. They will build it in segments. So, basically, they would start at one end and work their way up through to the other end. We will have to work out access issues. Part of that will be the consideration of the real estate. We will have to get right-of-way, temporary right-of-way for construction. That would include going through backyards to get there. That would include also restoration of those backyards for any damage that would be incurred from the construction, as part of those lands and damages and relocations costs. So, we are talking about some sizable, possibly sizable machinery. We're hoping that we can find a contract that would be a little more innovative, use some smaller equipment that would be able to get in and maybe not disturb as much, but we will seek the right-of-way necessary. We would pay you in accordance with that right-of-way for the permanent and for the temporary as well. And I can't guarantee you how long that would be. I don't know where you live along here.
We're actually, in fact, I have a question, and I don't want to take too much time, but the models that you're talking about, in terms of where that water comes from, we are two houses away from the railroad. So, BNSF, we had, we were part of all those conversations with MWRD and BNSF and IDNR and God knows how many properties and the village. So, you're saying that the modeling shows that river coming in from the end closest to the railroad bridge. I can tell you that the water, from an observational perspective, it comes in, from what I've seen at Pine and west. It does not come in from above, because we're a higher elevation. We are not required to have flood insurance. We're out.
Again, getting this slowed down's gonna help, it's gonna help you all to be able to connect to what you visually saw, right? Because like 2013, I would agree with that. It gets, it's basically straight on the end of Pine Street.
It floods up west, not down.
And then it goes toward forest, and then it goes back toward what would be your home.
Right. We're at the high end, so we do not flood.
So, you're down here in this area?
Yes.
Yeah. And the water probably does, I would imagine if we zoomed in, the water would show that it flows in in this area.
It flows down, and then it flows both directions?
Yes.
And then down Pine?
Correct. There are some areas in here that are elevated, that would not necessarily need the wall for protection, but they will have it.
Because I'll bet you that when you run that model for us, you will look very similar to that other house does. Your place would be on an island.
We are. We were removed from the floodplain because it, we are an island, because we're at such a high level.
So, they would, they would almost look in the model, if you stopped it at 2011-8, it's gonna stop, and they're gonna have a little island down there.
Correct.
So, I guess the plea that I would make to the board and to all of those of you involved with engineering is that there be some recourse given, or some consideration perhaps for some meetings for those of us who will have the direct impact of this project, because there is a difference in terms of what we will bear, and so I would like that to be factored in and ensure that our interests are fully represented in that way.
Yeah, and then I think the other thing, I know I'll be pretty picky about it. I've already warned you about it.
We have.
And phasing it, so that we can keep construction in phases as they go along, rather than having that whole L-shaped thing tore up for two and a half years. It'll be phased here, get in, get out, you know, they'll have to get in, I mean, some of that access, and then they'll back their way out. So, as an example, you're gonna be most likely least impacted than the person that's closer to forest, because that's the way they have to get in there to get to it, right?
Yeah. They would start at the railroad and work their way out towards Forest Avenue.
Back their way away.
Yeah. So, the lowest amount of time will be those closest to the railroad, and then the impacts will be greater for those close to Forest Avenue. And it'd be similar in Grohlwood, where you'll probably start at forest and work your way around back out to...
So, as an example, when they write the contracts, when I talk about phasing, so instead of waiting until they backed out and got all the wall done before they came back in and did any remediation of landscape, we want them to phase that in there so that after they evacuate a backyard and they're done there, that they don't wait and wait and wait, so you're all tore up. But then they go in and do that piece. It's not the most contractor-efficient way, because they have to mobilize multiple times. So, during that design phase, you're gonna have a pretty picky person talking about how we do that, right?
Yeah. And we can write that, the nice thing about our federal contracts is we can write in requirements like that to our specifications. We say, we will tell them on the drawings, and we have this big thick book that tells the contractor how they're to behave, and we will direct them in accordance with the wishes, that they would have to come in and complete sections, you know, with the remediation of the property as well.
Okay. Thank you.
One question though. If your house is high enough where it doesn't have flood insurance...
Right.
And that wall is a steady wall at 618, you, you...
Oh, that's a good question.
When you get to your house, your wall may be this high. So, it may have no effect on you flipping your kayak.
But we still wouldn't have access.
You may.
Well, meaning, if that wall is there, I might be able to push my kayak over, but I'm not gonna push it back over the wall to get back out of the river. So, I, I hear what you're saying, but I do not believe that it would solve that access issue that...
No, and I think we've committed to...
We've committed, as a part of even entering into this, that there would be the recreational component and the aesthetical component.
Great.
Then we have to try and figure out, if they can't get us there financially, and MWR can't get us there financially, then we have to figure out how to develop that as well.
Great. Thank you.
And can any of this work be done from the riverside? The river on the river?
Possibly. It's, it's possible. It, it could get, like, we wouldn't be able to require it in the contract, because if we required in the contract, it could be an increased cost that we would then have to pass along to local sponsors for preferred means and method. We let the contractor decide how they wanna do that. In general, the Displanes River is too shallow to put a barge in and then put the equipment we would need to build this wall on top of it and have it be able to move around and float. There is some equipment that possibly could be utilized in the shallows that could drive it, but it can be pricier and it can take longer, because then they have to worry about water levels and being able to navigate that.
Last question here, sir.
Okay. Ron Newman Quincy, you just mentioned the river is too shallow. Someone mentioned dredging the river, and I didn't quite understand what that problem would be, and nobody brought up the deep tunnel project. I thought that was supposed to help also.
Okay. Yeah. So, dredging the river, when we talk about dredging the river, you have to dredge the entire thing in order to gain benefits for flooding. Like, if we were to start at Forest Avenue, we'd have to keep going north and south to lower the entire, because if you start dredging there, then there's the shelf that the river runs into, and it has to jump up over it. It would just, you know, you can't do that. The other problem with it is, is that creates a lot of material. You know, we're talking about lowering river levels by two to three feet in order to save these community, this area of the community from flooding. That's a lot of dirt to move, and you have to have someplace to put it. Unfortunately, because of our urban area, all of that sediment is probably contaminated to some degree or another, and so you can't just put it anywhere. You have to put it in a special landfill, and that would, the special landfills, I think the nearest one is Michigan, so we're talking about trucks and trucks and trucks and trucks and more trucks, and that's just not viable. It's also very, very expensive. So that's kind of the reason why you can't do that.
Where's, where's the deep tunnel?
Oh, the deep tunnel. I, I apologize. The deep tunnel project, the McCook Reservoir just did come online. The deep tunnel services a majority of the Chicago River. Does have a Displanes River phase, but it does not impact actual flood levels on the Displanes River. It's more for basement backups and sewer, combined sewer overflows. So it doesn't have any impacts on the flood levels of this. If it did, it was already incorporated in the modeling because of the way that, that all the agencies work together. So when, we actually, the Corps had a piece of that, MWRD, we partner with them. All of those things, all those projects that are out there and are completed are already considered in this modeling. So anytime MWRD builds a project of water storage, of anything, it's put in the model, it takes that piece of the water out of it and that's reflected in what you see here today.
Hi, I'm Joe Dodgwick. I live on Pine Avenue. I have two questions. The first one is along West Avenue, some homeowner refuses to allow that wall to build, be built. Do you use eminent domain or something or forced to have that wall built?
So as part of the project partnership agreement, the local sponsor is required to obtain the real estate. So that would be a call based on the, the local sponsor, whether they would desire to use eminent domain to do that or not. We would leave that up to the village and the local sponsors to decide on a case-by-case basis.
Would you like to answer that, Ben?
I think we'd have to cross that bridge if we got to. Let's hope that we don't, it doesn't.
Okay, the next question. Between Forest Avenue and the railroad bridge, there's a thing called a floodway. You know what a floodway is? It's blocked with about 5,000 tons of broken concrete and other debris. If that was removed, according to the DNR, the level at a, you know, maximum flood stage would be 16 inches lower. That's a big substantial amount. And I believe their number is a little bit skewed. I think it would actually be 24 inches. I have a cross-sectional analysis that shows three feet, but that's a little bit flawed. But it would probably be two feet of difference. My question is, why, why would a landmark community like Riverside allow their floodway to be totally blocked? Like their broken concrete? And why, why don't you remove it to, see if you lower that level?
What are you talking about? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
From the Forest Avenue Bridge to the railroad bridge.
From here to here. On this side over here.
On the west bank.
Okay.
There's.
That's possible that there's concrete in there?
Well, it was verified by Mr. Ireland Jewell.
Okay.
And I have the topographical maps that show it. No, the big official maps.
Is that on Forest Preserve property?
It is Forest.
It's Forest Preserve property. And then, as far as, well, I'll come to Forest Preserves. Anybody from the Forest Preserve District here, or, I have to watch what I say.
Since the Forest Preserve owns this land, they would be responsible for remediating that?
Yes.
Getting, removing that?
Yes.
Which would mean cutting down trees, which they are loath to do. So I don't know, I mean, you can talk to them. You can go to their board and approach them about that. Unfortunately, I don't have any control over it.
I, I went to one of their civil engineers. He said the reason they won't remove it, and this was off the record, but he did tell me the reason is because you guys don't recommend it on your Groveland strategic study. He had seven plans on that study and none of those plans recommended removing it. You did recommend an excavation on the south end of it.
The Groveland study, I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to. I know DNR did a Groveland study and they did look at various solutions in this area. It may not have been proposed in that. And you're, I would love for you to take that to the Forest Preserve Board and ask them if they would be willing to do that.
What if I take it to you and we have a little meeting? How would you handle it?
They can come to us and we can, we'd be happy to help them out.
I've, I've studied this.
We do consist of restoration throughout the Chicagoland area. We work with Forest Preserve all the time. So we'd be happy to help them remove any debris from their property that they would like us to.
And how much does it cost to remove 5,000 tons of debris? Right now, a mile away, if the con, how do you contaminate concrete, by the way?
It's not as hard as you would think.
You don't contaminate it.
It can happen.
Well, all our streets are contaminated. We live with it. There's, there's a dump site a mile away that'll take broken concrete at no charge. All you gotta do is get a dump truck and a front loader, haul the weight and then all of a sudden we don't flood anymore.
Well, if we're talking about 5,000 tons, I would find it hard to believe that we would see a two-foot drop across the river in that area.
The official number is 16 inches, but they're, they're saying the split flow is 20, pardon, 17%. It's not 17%, it's about 8%.
But you have to take into consideration, if you've got 16 inches over this small area, you're not gonna gain enough flow storage to remove this area from the flooding. Because you would need 16 inches over a vast, vast area in order to allow for enough water to be stored to remove this from flooding.
No, it has nothing whatsoever to do with storage. Storing, storing a couple thousand.
Not an engineering discipline.
This is a conversation we can have among us and if we.
Among who? I'd like to speak to someone about this. I've studied this for 10 years. I've met with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Natural Resources.
We're not gonna talk it out.
Are you aware of the Site Channel Plan? Have you seen the cross-sectional analysis? You haven't seen any of this stuff. I would like to talk to somebody. Who should I talk to?
Let's talk after the meeting.
Let's, I mean, you and I?
Yes.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Get your dump trucks ready.
Richard Rankin on Groveland. Just a quick question.
I'm not denying that this other project that you're working on shouldn't be allowed. I'm just saying, think big, think big.
We love to think big.
Could you just quickly speak to the structural impact, the homes, of pounding of the steel that deeply, 20 feet from a home, a number of us? They don't want a garbage truck goes by an 1800s house, you can feel it. I don't know if it's gonna be worse to have a broken foundation or worse to be flooded every five years or so.
So what we would, what we would have, what we have all contractors do prior to construction is we do a site survey. They're required to photograph and video the, all of the sites. Any damage that would occur, we would be, we would remediate any damage of that. I can't specifically say that pounding sheet pile that close to your house won't damage it, but I know that we would watch it and be very careful with it. And we would, it's definitely something that we would consider.
How deep does it go from?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I, I'm not sure that we have a fine. 10 to 20 possibly, something like that. We've driven sheet pile much deeper than we would drive here. And we usually, we have operated in areas close to homes before, maybe not quite this close, at least from my experience. But I'm sure we've done it somewhere. And so there's, there are ways to do it without incurring damage nearby.
Do you know materials down there? So mostly just clay? Or do you know, like, if you did something, it was substantial?
So there's possibility there could be rocks and such down there. We think it's mostly clays. We would, we would drive for a clay bottom was what we would do, which is the impermeable layer. It's possible that a sheet pile would hit a rock. They have ways around and through those. And so they would work through that as we get through it.
Just another option, I mean, I'm interested in sheet pile all the time, you know, like two, three feet from homes. And they do a vibrating process now, which is a lot different than the old REM type. So it's kind of a little more annoying because it's continual.
Sure.
But you don't, you don't have that pounding and it doesn't, the concussion doesn't go as far back.
The ones I've seen have just had tremendous waves.
Yeah, no, it'll, it'll, I'm pretty certain, especially because the type, they can use a much smaller device without the high overhead and stuff like that. So I, my guess is they're gonna do a vibrating type, which will eliminate that.
So this really is the last question? Did you have one too?
I think so.
Okay, does anybody else have questions? We can't, peace fielders. If you have a question, please step up so we can get through to tonight.
I'm Ray Monerato. I lived in Maplewood and I think I've lived here 40 years. I basically, from these maps, water won't flow west, water won't flow north, water won't flow south. What happens to the water that you've corralled off?
You're talking about the, sorry, this view here? So the water that used to go in here, where does this go? So this water all flows downstream from the indications we have in the modeling. We would see it if it were to go somewhere over here or somewhere up here. It would, it would be indicated by the increased levels that we do not see. So our understanding is that putting this wall in, because really what you have here is you don't have high flows. You just have a very small storage area back here. It's not like it's flowing through there in great amounts. So what you're doing is you're creating flow through the river, so it just, it heads downstream basically.
Are you anticipating putting pumps on the north side of that wall just in case?
Up here? Up here.
Correct.
So I think, I think you're, if I can hop in, I think he's worried about once the flood event has reached its crest and then it starts to go back down, how do we get the water that's there on, right by the island, my internet, right? How do we get that back down?
Yeah, and also how do you get it out of the sewers? And I mean, you have to wait days to do this.
So when we put in the wall, we put in pump stations that lift any water that accumulates behind here up and over and into, into the river.
Very good. And.
And so this area here, if you look at this profile, there could be areas that would be ponded. It's very possible. This is, is that one, it's a half a foot, so you'd be, this is like six inches of water. The rest of this would all flow out. And so this, we would anticipate, this is being about six inches of water. This would dry up over a matter of days. Probably would just seep into the ground and flow back to the river naturally.
And how, how deep you estimate that water will be that doesn't flow out of there normally?
This is that profile.
Because I've seen the rivers that flow through people's backyards.
Right. This is that profile and then we're looking at, this, this is six inches or half a foot. So yeah, it looks like you could have maybe like eight inches right here. That'd be about the deepest.
All right. And it was disturbing that, that little island of water that you guys didn't really know about. That's my neighbor's backyards right there.
Right here?
No, on, yes.
This?
Yeah, that part, that part.
This part of here?
The lake. And, and a river flows across the back of my yard into that. Half of that is in the Woodside people, the other half's on the Maple side. But my biggest question, my biggest fear was in the last flood, is that the water in the street, the water in the backyard facing the river and that lake were going to unite. And I remember looking at the clouds when it, it was broke and I said, thank God it broke because we were gonna have a union here and our houses were gonna be flooded.
So you're saying that behind the houses on Maplewood, move here closer to the east, in the backyards of those homes?
The Woodside backyards.
So, so that's, that's, that's gonna be from the storm event that says ponding already, right?
Yeah, my neighbor has a backyard that I'd say has about eight inches of water and then he's got a beautiful ice pond in the winter if you guys wanna come by. But I mean, it's, it, it goes on, but it, I mean, ducks are in there nesting. That's how much water's there.
So that, that's an interesting thing. So this model would not have no way of adding water, rainwater to the topo that they're talking about right now, right? This would not show, this would be a flood with no rain. That makes any sense, right, from the model?
Yeah, there's more rain, more rain flows into that. We need a topographical map to show us where the water is going to go and be able to predict that.
So if you're experiencing this right here now from a rain event, that is what you're going to experience in the future and this levee down here will have no impact on what happens up there.
Sorry, you say. Okay, thank you.
I'm Colleen Turiumi. I live on Maplewood as well. Just to clarify, I didn't hear a definitive answer to Cliff's question. So all the backyards on Maplewood Road are 618 or above?
I would have to look at the exact top of topography here. This would indicate, since there's water here?
No, I'm saying the backyards of the west.
Over here?
Other side.
No.
Along the river.
Along the river, the west side.
Okay.
All those backyards are 618 or above.
Uh, wherever there's not water, yes.
Okay, all right. So if the wall.
If there's water in here, if there's water in here.
Yeah, but what, do you see what I'm saying, Jeff? So the, the levee is gonna be 618. And then you get Toulouse Shower's house, the island house where it makes the turn down Park.
So you can see.
And now we're lower, north of the 618, we're lower than 618. That's what you're saying.
There are portions of your backyard, as you can see here, because this dark portion is the river. And this is a partial flooding, as you can see, this isn't normally all river. Your portion of your backyards here are indicated as getting water. So yes, a portion of your property does currently flood. If you go all the way to the end, you see that that increases to a degree. But what we have indications of is that it does not reach the homes in these areas. If it does, that is something that we could look at. If you say, if you believe that this water does reach your homes, we could look at that and see if the information we have is incorrect.
Your, your information is incorrect because it does reach the homes.
Does it reach the homes over land?
Over land. Doesn't it reach Anna's home? Yes. Yeah, in 2008. It reaches, yeah, it reaches our attorney's home, so he knows, yes. He knows. He knows.
Over land, yeah.
Over land, yes, absolutely. So your model is slightly flawed.
Well, no, it indicates that there's water there, whether it hits the homes or not. One other thing.
This is a bigger flood though. This is a bigger flood event than what we have had.
So what we could do, if you wanted to, we can build this flood wall all the way up here.
Yes.
We could do that. But everyone along this path, all the way up, has to agree to having their flood wall built in their backyard. One person says no and it's done.
I don't think anybody said no yet. We haven't started yet, so that whole real estate thing hasn't happened yet.
There is running water through those backyards.
Yeah, definitely.
I agree. It shows it right here.
212 Maplewood.
No, running across it, well, here's the park levee, new levee.
We're talking about right here.
That's, that's what that's showing.
Yes, we agree.
Flowing, flowing, behind Sheila Daly's backyard.
We're talking about this island home right here, correct?
Yeah.
That's his home. That's Lou's home.
Okay, and you're saying water flows through here. We agree 100%. Water does flow through here because that's what the model shows.
And that's what it, that's pointed over on the other map.
And again, water will flow into there, just as it always has, to the same level, except for right at the wall where we get that half an inch increase.
And then what it used to do, it would flow east and then it would flow south. And so now it will flow east and stay there, I guess.
So what the water does right here is it flows down.
It flows east and south, but when it hits the wall, it will just stay, stay on Maplewood.
Right there.
Correct, correct.
But the level will not go up from there. It will stay at the same level that it is now.
Okay, this is a bigger flood event than we've ever had, correct? Okay. So what we, what we have experienced, what we've seen, is that that water is already running. Could you attest to this?
So what happens here is that the water, as it floods, it does flow through here. It goes over this area into this neighborhood. So when you see the flow, what you're seeing is it filling this area.
That's correct.
To flood.
Correct.
When we put these flood wall in here, the water is going to seek its own height and it will find that height. So whatever water level is over here, it'll be over there.
For those people who are gonna have, who are gonna be living in a lake?
I agree 100% that we have indications that the people up here were not interested in seeing a flood wall built in their backyards. If that's changed, we can relook at that.
I never, I never knew that that was an option.
I didn't either.
I never heard of that.
We can look at it.
Because, because again, that, that, there, there is a, a long-term benefit because that could, then you could get to a higher.
We could possibly get to the higher.
You could get higher than 618 if, again, the premise that these guys were given is that going north along Maplewood was off limits. Because to best protect our entire village, it would be to go from 31st Street all the way down to the railroad bridge and get to a 620 and then everybody inside would be protected. The downside is to that. There is a visual thing that we have to work through because there is a retention device along that whole period.
About to do that point? Because if. The residents on Maplewood?
Has anyone asked the residents on Maplewood, anyone on Maplewood, has anyone been asked about that?
Or west, or any of the streets? There were no questions as to any of the residents directly impacted.
That's what this is about though. That's why we're doing this, yeah. They're gonna, they're gonna do, I mean, when they did the whole Displanes River, they're gonna do the whole Displanes River, again, because all they're really trying to do is to reduce FEMA insurance money, right? So they're gonna look along the whole river all the way from Wisconsin down, what, the Will County lines, what this one was? And then they're gonna look at the hot pockets where the most homes, where the most insurance claims have happened. And then they're gonna try and resolve that little piece and just keep nicking away at those, right? So that's what drove into this. And if you think about it, what might be driving some of that is, is there's the low-hanging fruit, if you will. There's 50 dense homes down there and there's 20 or 30 up along Maplewood that currently may not have provided and, and showed up on the radar for insurance. Right? So you're gonna be off the radar because the people in Groveland didn't go to him and ask for it. It's just, so now we can, now I think we can bring that up. If there is a desire to go, because we're already paying money, somebody's paying money, to go from the river all the way out to Woodside. If you take that cost and turned it north, we get about a third maybe of the way up, up toward 31st Street. So again, from a cost, cost number and cost modeling position, we'd have to talk about another two foot.
We could relook at it again if there's indications there's more damages along there than we had information on. That we could look at that again and see if we can justify going all the way, all the way up to the next, the next tie spot.
I think you guys need a survey, a land survey of all those backyards on Maplewood. It's only one block long. It's not gonna be that big of a deal. No, really. Well, if we're gonna be spending all this money and we're gonna have this, we don't wanna screw this up.
I, I, I don't disagree with you. We can do, right now I have $50,000 to work with and I'm burning through it fast. Just trying to get this done.
So, so, so during the design, during the design phase though.
$50,000 is a drop in the bucket for a house that is gonna incur damage.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just telling you what my limitations are right now.
So again, I think another thing that would help is, at least I'm hearing this, is the reliability of LiDAR, right? I mean, again, for, for folks that don't use it and invest money on it, we, we use it for our development. for our developments all the time. So, so we would have an unfair standard of comfort that you folks don't have where, when you ask for an actual physical land survey. Our, our, from, in the development business, we find that the LiDAR is more accurate than the human when we do surveys. So, so that's why we prefer it in, in areas that don't have it. We get frustrated when they don't have it because then we have to build in some more contingency for the human error in surveying. So I think that's one thing that we need to figure out as, because part of this too is just educating ourselves. And I, I'm a month or two, or three or four, I don't know how long we've been at it, into it, so we've had a long time to do that. How to get that during the design phase meetings, I think is a really good opportunity. Because I think one way to do that, if you guys can, is to do an option A and an option B in regards to do that, even at a planning stage number, to see if it's even approachable within the funding mechanism that we have, right? Can we do that?
We can do that during the design.
Because if, if I'm hearing from you guys that you, you're not opposed to going north on Maplewood, we might as well take a look at that.
I'm not saying we are or we're not, I'm not making a decision for the block.
Yeah, no, but again, I think everybody needs to chat, talk that through, and that's why we're having this.
But it's never been an op, it's never been an option. I've never heard of that. I've lived there for 28 years, I've never heard that there's, that that is even-
I don't know if there was an option that way or not. I don't know.
Did you hear, is, did you-
I think one of the parts that are problematic that we're not touching on that was slightly mentioned is that it's not in the flood plane. You don't have flood insurance, so as part of their analysis, it wasn't bared into the comparison or analysis because how can they figure out the damages for the dollar-to-dollar ratio that they need to quantify the project for Army Corps of Engineers? Pardon? I'm not on the river. Okay.
Could you test the LiDAR data at certain select points?
Sure. Yeah, actually, as part of the design phase, they'll do that.
Yes, we will.
You'll do random surveys.
So if you have a dozen's random points on Maplewood, compare that to what you have in the Corps.
Definitely as part of the design, we can do that.
As part of the design, it is part of the purchase of the properties. When you go through to do that, they have to do that again.
They definitely do a survey during the purchase of the properties. Okay.
Okay, my last question is, is there a shut-off valve for the storm sewer on Maplewood, on the Maplewood side, the north side of Park?
No.
There's none.
The two that we have is on West Avenue, right by Pine Avenue, and on Forest.
Peter Conboy, 241 Maplewood Road, resident there for 27 years. I agree with Scott here, to my left, the things that he had mentioned regarding doing a resurvey, going from 31st Street down to Forest Avenue. What I'd like to know is what is the elevation difference from 31st Street down to Forest Avenue?
Do we have that?
Elevation difference in where?
From, along the river, a straight line going from 31st Street down to Forest Avenue.
Like the river itself, or what are we trying, what are you trying to-
I'm trying to say, how high is 31st Street or higher is it than Forest Avenue?
Ground elevation?
Ground elevation.
I think it's about 58. Is that 58? Could be. We can, we can look at that.
Okay.
If it's 620 at 31st.
I'd like to see that.